Did um. Did anybody that was trying to register yet? Did you? Communicate with them at all anymore?
No.
We have nobody that's like officially. Signed up for.
Correct.
And then we just.
We have a few people who have. Registered, but um. No one's reached out to me.
So I just have to report on the comment from the group at this point. When we get to public comment.
Yes.
That's that's been dispersed.
Yes.
And did I? Tell you, I think you were on the emails. Oh, yeah, yesterday with Josh. McCall from the trust.
Oh, um.
It's it's he's just not, he's just not gonna be able to join us at ten thirty or whatever, but he.
Yeah.
At eleven, so most likely he'll come in somewhere around the mayor's report, so. I'll try and be paying attention and we'll just let um the mayor know. Um, when he joins, but Roger knows about that. Morning, Mayor. You're still muted, but I know you're just still setting up.
What is it that I know about?
There we go. Oh, um, the trust Josh that he's coming in a little later than what was scheduled for.
And and Mike Mon sent me a message this morning that he wasn't. He had a conflict.
Oh, okay. Uh, thank you for that. Is he gonna come at all or?
Apparently not.
Okay. All right, hopefully I can uh keep all my documents straight here today. I try, I tried to do some things that'll make it easier for navigation at this meeting, Mayor.
I'm I know what you mean.
We'll see how it goes. I don't want to make everybody dizzy. I always feel so bad when I'm scrolling around on the screens.
You guys hear me?
Yeah.
Jack, Ken, yeah.
Still snacking, so.
Yeah, you better uh stock up. You got a three hour.
No, no.
That's a long time for you.
I feel like I, you know, less license to uh walk away. All right, yeah. We'll see how that goes. Speaking of which, I'll be right back.
Take the opportunity now.
Also, Jen, I did make you co-host. Can you confirm that?
Thank you. Man, I hadn't had myself fully set up the way I like to.
Good morning, everybody.
Yes, Molly, it looks like I have that, all those permissions. Thank you very much.
Good morning to you, sir.
Morning, Cameron.
Morning, Karen.
This seems like an early morning meeting, but it was nothing compared to yesterday. It started at. Seven thirty. Your time. Six thirty mine.
What meeting was that for?
UFA.
Oh.
These firemen seem to have. Seem to like the early morning.
Morning, John.
Morning, John.
Good morning, good morning, Cameron, Jen, Roger, Molly.
Yes.
Good morning.
And. In what time zone are you?
East Coast.
Oh, that's not so bad.
Yeah, New York City. I'm still on French time. I explored the Bosque region for a few days, the last few days. It was fascinating. Ever been there, Roger?
I uh I've been to the Pyrenees. Uh, and I've been to Andorra. But.
Not to the Atlantic coast, the other end of the Pyrenees.
Correct, I have not.
Pretty neat, lot of surfing. I'm not, I'm not a big surfer, uh but lot of surfing, lot of great food and wine. It's near Provence Bordeaux.
Yeah, uh, you said you're not a big surfer. Are you a little surfer?
No, you know, both my knees were replaced and that kind of ends your surfing days. Uh. In fact, I get on the SUP and I'm I'm off, I'm back in the water in a few seconds. It just doesn't quite work. Not enough feedback, you know? But happy to body surf. I consider myself a strong body surfer.
Um, isn't the Atlantic kind of cold there?
You know, it was pretty reasonable. It was uh twenty four, so I think that's somewhere around seventy. But lots of great hiking. Beel Camino starts there. And uh did a couple of long hikes along the coast. They have an incredible trail system, multi-use trail system, uh just really fantastic infrastructure for it.
Hmm.
Hmm. How's things in Alta? Are you back in Alta?
I am not. I'm in SoCal. And it looks like um Craig is in the laundry room.
Yeah, I am. Nice.
Well, it's love, it's lovely up here in Alta this morning.
Right, I I'm home, so my wife has me doing laundry.
I see.
I'm really looking forward to getting back to Alton, starting the hiking season, but uh my friends are advising me not to get too excited. That it may be a little premature.
I think the um. We have an extended mud season. Okay, so we need um three more council persons.
So just, I guess as a reminder, uh we are, I am expecting Sheridan and Elise, and I talked to Carolyn yesterday. And she may chime in, but unsure with her work schedule and whatnot, if she'll be able to do that. So hopefully.
Well, we need at least one more to. substitute a quorum.
Sheridan is trying.
Trying, okay.
Getting bumped. There she is.
Yeah, there she is. With.
There's a, there's a background photo with some of you in it.
Yes. Stumps. There we are. Good morning.
Good morning.
And where in the world are you?
I'm in the Cootines in Canada. Near Kimberly.
The Cootines, really, huh? And here's the.
Give you a view of it, Mayor.
Oh. Nice. Okay, um, I would like. Like the call to order the uh. Soon twenty first two thousand and twenty-three Alta Town Council Work Session. Um. And we are um. We're holding this meeting electronically without an anchor location pursuant to my determination of May twenty-third. And for the convenience of those who are in. Canada, New York. Palo Alto. Laconia. And Alta. Which. All right, so our first order of business is discussion of the. FY. Twenty twenty-three year-end budgets, and I think it's over to. Uh, Jen for that.
Okay, um, so this is a work session on um mainly focused on the budgets FY twenty-three and twenty-four. This is kind of the rough agenda that. I've put together, um, you know, this work session is really, you know, this is for the council. This is, you know, we have a lot. On our agenda today regarding um. Current budget year end and future budget, and I really want to make sure that we get through. In the work session is much um. Points that you guys want to discuss topics. So if there, I guess I'd just like to ask, is there anything that is? Something you'd like to discuss in this work session that is not on the agenda before you? So I was hoping we could just. Quickly talk about FY twenty-three and then kind of the main highlights of the tentative budget for twenty-four, including, I was gonna go through the changes. In the um tentative budget that's being proposed. I thought I'd quickly go over sewer water rates with you, the proposed tax increases. We can talk about the project's plan and do Q and A. Is there anything that any council members want to add? To this? Hearing none, okay. Um. So quickly for the, I mean, the, I guess, you know, we're wrapping up fiscal year twenty-three. Um, we will meet our budget. Um. I've. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions. The one thing I did want to talk about was the transfer to the Capital Projects Fund. Currently, it's budgeted at five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Um, you know, we have that hundred percent rule um. About not holding more um cash in our accounts than what our um budget is. And so we'll, I don't have all of the information yet to be able to project what that num, what that minimum number is gonna be. Um. But what I would like to do in passing the twenty-three budget is kind of the same thing that we did last year where um I come back to the council. And and give you the number that's the minimum that we have to transfer. And, you know, I guess the other, I can give you the minimum that we have to transfer and then the, you know, the maximum of the five hundred and eighty-one thousand. And we can have a discussion about what the exact transfer is gonna be. Does that sound like a good direction to go?
Do you have, do you have an approximate number for the minimum, Jen?
I do not.
No, not even approximate, can't even guess, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, all right.
Just to the minimum, but but we're budgeting five eighty-one.
Correct. Yep.
Currently.
Yeah, so last year the transfer that we made was a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so we went above the minimum. But, you know, we had a higher number. I can't remember exactly what it was, you know, it was a. Couple hundred thousand or or more in the budget. So, you know, there's, there's a big range, to be perfectly honest, and so. That's why I'd like to come back to the council unless the council. Would like to direct me, no, please just transfer that five eighty-one. I would expect the minimum to be less than that, um but I know that these are kind of really, you know, that's, that could be a big range and it's pretty rough, so I don't expect you guys to make. A decision today on that unless you all agree that you feel like you want to put the five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in the Capital Projects Fund.
Two, two quick points. One. I note that the um. Latest estimate of revenue over expenses, and that's only a proxy for what we might end up with in terms of revenue over expenses, is almost nine hundred grand. So I think there's a better than even chance that um the number could go up. Uh, and I really like the way you're approaching it in. Resolution eight. Um, where you're saying basically that any amounts of the general fund that would put it over the hundred percent rule. Uh, will be transferred to the capital fund. And then you're gonna come back and tell us how that worked out, but. But I I like that approach because then we know we're maxing out our our normal general fund account, our sort of normal. What some of us would think of as operating reserves and working capital. We're maxing that out at a hundred percent of revenue and everything else is going into the fund that. I like the way you're handling that. I like this resolution. I am in support of a passing resolution number eight.
Does anyone else have comments on the council about that?
Nope.
Okay, are there any, um, I guess I'll move in that direction. Uh, are there any other comments on FY twenty-three budget?
I mean, it's, it's largely historical. I mean, it's, what are we gonna do? Ten days left, not much to change.
Okay, well, then we'll move to FY twenty-four. And. Did my? Did my screen change so that you can see the consent agenda? Are you still looking at the agenda that I had for that?
We're seeing the consent agenda.
Great. Okay, this did work. Okay. All right, so what we're gonna focus on here is basically this column on the far right, the future proposed budget. Um, I am gonna go through and. This, okay, good. Um, what I was gonna.
Is this page thirty-one of fifty-four in the consent agenda?
Um, I think it starts as, oops, I just lost my space. Sorry, I think it starts. Yes.
Just wanna make sure I'm on the right version.
Yes. And so I am starting on. There's an. This is page thirty-two here, John. And I believe if it helps you, this number up here. As I'm going through it, if you're looking at a um.
Oh, yeah.
Can help me keep on track. So one of the things, so just to um remind you what these highlighted changes represent. Is you passed a tentative budget in May. And so anything that is changed since that presented budget. Is highlighted. So I kept highlights just for the Budget Committee members. I highlighted um changes going into. That last Budget Committee meeting that we had, and then anything that I changed since then has also been highlighted, so um. Just to make sure that's clear. So one of the things that is, the first thing that's changed here is our projection for sales tax revenue. And the reason this number has changed is that the Budget Committee instructed me to build in. What this would be if we included our projection for just general sales tax as it currently is. The point one percent resort tax, which I have an estimated um revenue of sixty-eight thousand dollars. And a one percent transient municipal room tax of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. But with the delay in how that um tax gets imposed, you, we would only um. Have three quarters of a year if we approved that today, so that number is um. You know, if we did impose that tax, that number would be larger next year based on a full year cycle. So the sum of those is two million there, as you can see. And I'm just gonna scroll through here and highlight changes. Um. Court fines and fees. We have seen um. My. Belief is that with the parking program. We have seen a reduction in um. Citations that we have issued, which has resulted in a reduction in our revenue. So we um, there may be other factors involved, but um. I think that's kind of the biggest reason that that number has dropped just a little bit in the last year or so. So I'm reflecting that. Um, I did, we, you know, John Goldner has retired, so there had to be some uh modifications to the budget to um represent um. His severance pay um there, so and we do have, if you recall, we do have a. Specific um account set up for um for funding this, so we'll take money out of that. Um, the transfer from the Impact Fund, we, we'd kind of, this spring, we had moved um. This number around, first we thought. The Community Center project was gonna happen. In fiscal year twenty-three, and then we were unsure, and we bumped the number to twenty-four, and then we realized that the project was actually gonna be completed this year, so that's just, you know, I made a change here. Compared to the tentative budget, so that's why that's highlighted, and we do have forty-five hundred dollars coming out of the um Impact Fee Fund paid for that study this year in twenty-three. Um. In this court uh department, just some updated numbers based on um conferences and budgeting and just looking at. Uh, better numbers for what we have in front of us for this coming year for a couple of conferences. These are uh. Two conferences that Molly will attend, and they are really, they're required, they're not really optional for her in her role, so. Updating those numbers. In the administrative department, we had a couple of changes. Um, one was we. I adjusted the number for salaries, um and this has to do with um once we hire, once we um. I guess had the contract in place with, for the interim uh town manager and knew what those figures were as well as. Being um. I guess down a staff person for a little bit um here in the office with the Assistant Town Administrator. Uh, we just reflected what we thought were gonna be more realistic numbers in the payroll for the administration department. Uh, taxes is just a reflection of payroll, so that number bounces depending on what you have in salaries and wages. Um, we have some. Termination fund stuff in here for John again, just reflecting, that's the actual payout of it. Uh, the. Oh, I increased our memberships by a hundred dollars. That's not much. We do down here, the forty thousand dollars. Is for John, part of John Goldner's um contract with Cottonwood. Um, Lands Advisory. Sixty thousand dollars in the admin department for legal expenses. And. You know, that change is really just based on use and projected use and looking at. The. I'd say the big projects on the horizon are, we're gonna have to enter into a new contract for the parking this year, so that's gonna probably take up some legal time. Um, again, probably some work on the town manager position. And. Other stuff that comes down the pipeline. Thirty-five hundred dollars in bank charges, and this is really, uh, this is kind of one of the um results of the. The fraud activity that we had and having new um added protections on our accounts. We have a um, it's a positive pay system where basically any check we write, we actually proactively inform the bank. Of that information so that they don't cash anything um that we haven't previously authorized. As well, we have another system also for any sort of ACH, so like payroll and stuff like that, there are, um, those are all pre-authorized as well. Uh, this employer tax number in the municipal building is just a um update uh based on wages. Utility is just an update based on. Essentially uh. Use and what the current charges are. In the transportation department, um. Uh, I do have. Five thousand dollars here. I'm gonna um take back what I said just a minute ago, I guess. Um, in regards, we do actually, the. The legal fees for parking, we actually do code to this department, so um. Those chart, those um hours will be billed into this department, but that is a big project that we're working for here. Uh. In addition to the normal traffic management and stuff that we do in transportation, um. After a big winter like what we just had. We are gonna need to replace all of the signs in town, and so we have bumped that budget line item up to reflect basically. Uh. All new signage in the town. Uh, metering. So this program, um. The way this works is the town does the payroll we issue, we collect the hours, we issue. The payroll for the officers that are out on duty, but Snowbird and Alta reimburse us fifty-fifty for those costs. So it's really um. Outside of in. Our staff time to administer the program, it doesn't cost the town any extra money to do the metering program the way we have it structured now. So you'll see that we also, we have a revenue line item for twelve thousand one hundred. In the police department, um just updated numbers for benefits and taxes related to um. Honing in on wages and how that's gonna kind of that, the trickle-down effect of how that affects those line items. The buildings ground maintenance supplies, I think the the main increase change to that is um. Due to a number of different maintenance projects that Chris and our building maintenance person Mac have identified for this year. Those are also reflected in the projects plan that we've presented as well in a little bit more detail. Utilities and phones, just, you know, those costs have increased a little bit, so I'm trying to. Be a little bit more dialed on those numbers. Uh, miscellaneous service, uh, one of the new programs we've kind of added on here is helping support um. And getting uh weather forecasting specific to our um. Specific to Alta directly.
Could you speak about that just a little bit, Jen?
Yeah, Chris, do you wanna actually chime in on that one?
Yeah, sure, and. We could also just pass it off to Mike Maury, but um, so. An individual by the name of Mike Cook um is a professional weather forecaster. Uh, who. Who um works under a contract. Basically, a cooperative agreement between um Alta Ski Area, UDOT. Snowbird and maybe the Powder Birds. At any rate, there's, there's a cooperative program to fund. Um, a compensation package for Mike Cook to provide. Weather forecasting. That is downscaled and specific to Upper Little Cotton Canyon in Alta. Um, he's been doing this for a long time, you know, I think most of us know Mike Cook. Um. We, the town does uh has had access to his forecast products in the past. Um, and we were approached by Alta Ski Area to make a contribution. To the program, and I think we more or less negotiated the the amount that we're going to pay. Um, the the total cost of providing Mike services is something like fifty thousand dollars and. Um. Jen, I actually am not sure what the amount we ended up including in the budget was, is it five? Five thousand dollars?
That's, yeah.
Yeah, so, so it's a, it's, that's the, you know, the size of a contribution that the town. Often makes to cooperative programs like this and. Um. You you know, it's definitely, uh, it's an invaluable product for, you know, the operational, everybody with a hand on. Um, public safety and transportation operations in the canyon, so. That's what that is.
I've contributed on a personal level of this program for a while and enjoyed this forecast for over a decade and. It's great. It's. It's very specific to what's happening in Alta.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, minor updates in the post office, um. For. Taxes again, just a better calculation based off anticipated wages and a little bit of um. Ex-added funding to support their IT program. They've. For a long time, kind of operated on a little bit of a sys, different system than the rest of the town, and we're kind of, we need to. Bring them up to speed with what everybody else is working off of and whatnot, give them some resources. Within the um. Summer program, um, the. Storage unit, um. Monthly cost has just gone up thirty percent, so I had to build that in. Um, and. Don't know what this number was before, but the um. The equipment maintenance for the summer program, um, I have it six. The equipment maintenance for the summer program, um, I have it six thousand, which is also what we've projected at year end this year, so year over year, not a huge change there. Oh. I lost my place. Um, and then this, um, the four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to the capital projects fund is in here. And so, so that is the end of the section for the general fund. Now we'll quickly go through the capital project budget. Um, currently for FY. Um, twenty-four, we have. The four hundred and forty-four from the general fund being transferred into the capital projects fund, so this is that number coming in. We have um a hundred thousand in this line item for uh the Tom Moore Toilet Project and Community Feasibility Study, so. Um, twenty-five and seventy-five thousand for each of those projects. Uh, Police Department, um, fifty-three thousand here for their um building up um maintenance projects and updates. And uh. Eighty thousand in equipment, uh, we. Chris, maybe at a certain point when we talk about the projects plan and whatnot, um, we have a generator um at Alta Central that is gonna. Need to be replaced here soon and uh just to buy us some time right now. Um, we need to make some modifications to that system. Um, Alta Central, if the power goes out, runs off that generator, and so if there's no generator, they um. Are offline and being a dispatch center offline is a major issue for us that we want to do everything we can um. To avoid, so we need to. Spend some money there, um. That's the capital projects fund budget.
Do we wanna hold our comments on the uh capital items till we get to the? The budget that's attached to the resolution?
Um.
I would do them now, John.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it now.
Okay. Um, well. It's, uh, well then, I I think we're gonna need the other.
Projects.
Yeah. I, the one that gives, is giving me some indigestion, um. But it seems like we're sort of slipping into this modus operandi where we're gonna start. Funding projects. Ahead of time before we've really developed the project. And I, I struggle with this, the 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 big glaring one. I I mean, I guess I should consider the Tom Moore toilets in this realm too, because at least I haven't seen any kind of actual plan for the Tom Moore toilets. But the the uh community center feasibility study. Um, I feel like that's putting the cart before the horse, uh, you know, we're going pretty far down the road on. The whole idea that we're gonna take another run at building the community center and and. Um, and I think we're skipping some important steps on the way to that, I'm not. I I I, you know, number one would be, we really need to do more thorough site assessment than we've done in the past. That was the step we kind of skipped with the, I thought that's what we were doing with INIAD, it turned out not really, what we were doing was a conceptual design project with INIAD. Um, and parts of the conceptual design project I thought were pretty good, like the programming, but. You know, what we learned about the site was pretty limited. Um, I think there are, is a little bit of land left from that site that would be worth studying. And I think studying the town center site, just the site. Would be worth, um, you know, it would actually be the right place to start. And then the second element that I think we're skipping is, um. To just assume that the next building we need to build is the community center. I think we need to have more internal dialogue on that. Um, I personally think what we really need to do, and I understand that rocks are falling and and, you know, that's a factor. But what we really need is a town facilities master plan. Uh, and look out at our building needs that we expect over at least three to five years. Especially with the emergence of some problems with our existing buildings like Alta Central. Um, and then also, we need to, uh, you know, I I think Mike Maury has. Is 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 a great soldier and will do whatever we need him to do, but. I think he's expressed a preference to not be in the community center if possible. I think we should respect that, and frankly, it may be a higher priority to build that building. Than to build the community center next, so it seems like we're just a little cart ahead of the horse here. And so, and and then there's, we haven't even gotten the report back, the final version of the report back. From the forty-five hundred dollar study, now forty-five hundred dollars to have that architect update his estimate. I I'm not, I'm not here to. To cast disparaging, uh, throw rocks at that, but. But seventy-five thousand, that's gonna be spent how? On, on what? And is it even the right building to build next? So I I I honestly would like to see the seventy-five thousand. Move from the section that it's in here, uh, as. You know, just for all you home gamers, everything that's in this section that says projects requested for approval in twenty-four, we're approving these projects today. When we vote in favor of this plan, these projects are deemed approved, and they're free to spend the money. Green light, and and I don't have a problem with that, with any of them, except this seventy-five thousand dollars for the community center, because I just don't think we've laid the groundwork. And and frankly. I think it's fifty-fifty that the next building we build should be the community center. I think it's quite possible that it could end up being a different building than that next, and. And again, backing out, part of. How we can help make that decision and frame that discussion is to do more site analysis. So I'd like to see them move this seventy-five thousand down to the. Projects not ready to propose, it can still stay in the twenty-four column if you want, they come back to us in a month or two. Uh, when there's been a little more structure and we have a little more of a plan, and uh, but I'm uncomfortable. Uh, approving this on sort of a. Spend the money in the, in what amounts to a discretionary manner on anything related to the community center, that just seems like a little too wide open for me.
Well, what you've said about um. A town facility master plan makes some. Sounds pretty sensible to me. Uh, because it would include all of our facilities and what their status is and uh. Potentially a schedule for um. Them being upgraded or replaced or whatever, um. It would be. And it makes me, it makes me think about um. Craig's advocacy for really a um. A a long-term plan for the town. Um, which facilities master plan would be a portion. Um. And what you're saying, John, is that. Don't get into designing. A building. When that may, that might not be the highest priority thing we wanna spend our money on.
Exactly, and and I agree with everything you say about the value of the community center. And how that could be part of a a bigger master, a a bigger sort of town plan. Um, but I think the pressing need now is to develop that town facilities plan. Because not only the issues we're having around the existing community center and Rockfall. But also the issues that have emerged regarding Alta Central and its potential instability.
I would agree with with John too, I think that, you know, being on the council for a while now, this is. I feel like we are working in a better direction towards getting plans for projects, and I like that we're starting to. Get stuff lined up, but I don't think we should earmark seventy-five thousand for a community center when we don't know, one, what that forty-five hundred dollar study is gonna say, and then. Two, if we need it right away, I mean, I. I have big dreams that we'll have a community center too, and it would be amazing, but. Um, maybe we just need to rethink some things, and I don't know, Roger, I I'm not sure what the planning commission is working on, but maybe a long-term building. Facilities for the town might be a great project for them to just kind of start looking into.
I, I think we have a. Underutilized resource in the planning commission. And this would be a good place to uh put them to work.
With Chris, with Chris Colley.
Of course.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So shall I make a motion that we move the seventy-five thousand down to the uh not yet ready to propose, but we can keep it in the twenty-four calendar year? Does that seem like a reasonable motion?
I.
This.
John, yeah, I think uh the place to do that is when we consider the resolution in the regular meeting. So if you can just hold, keep your powder dry until that agenda item, I think that's the way that should happen.
And I agree with your points, John, and and uh what you've said, Roger and Elise as well. I'd include the Tom Moore toilet funds in that, uh, perhaps there, in what you mentioned, in that, I I haven't seen a plan for it, I think. Um, site analysis is a great focus going forward, and so. I'm hesitant to pull the trigger on allocating the funds until I see what we're actually thinking about doing there.
Well, I, the way I see it is that we need some data on that Tom Moore toilet. Before we can make any sort of uh decision on what direction to take, and the data we need is, what will it take? To actually stabilize that thing and just stop the deterioration. No, sa- set it, let alone um trying to um. Uh, refurbish it in any sense, so I feel that we are. Under, under-informed, shall I say, with respect to um what the Tom Moore toilet is, I mean. Or what what the future of the Tom Moore toilet should be. And the thing about that was, we, we know where it is, we know what it is, we know that it's in terrible shape. What we don't know is to how to even. Keep it uh from falling apart completely. And an investment, a reasonable uh investment in answering those questions would be, I think, prudent.
Would it make sense to, I mean, this twenty-five thousand dollar number, at least in in. Recent years, that's kind of been the number we've been using just to actually do the work. Would it make sense to resize this to more like a feasibility study kind of number, like five or ten grand to study it and? And then if it seems feasible, go ahead and give budget to the actual project of executing it. Does that seem okay?
Uh, to me, I think that the twenty-five K is maybe too much to uh look at feasibility and not enough to actually fix it.
Right.
Can we hear from Chris Colley?
Yeah.
Colley on this?
So we have a proposal from, you know, the state's preeminent, um. Only recommendable uh restoration stone mason to do a project. For twenty-five thousand dollars, and this was from October of twenty-twenty-one, so costs have increased. You could as, it's reasonable to assume costs have increased um to. Spend a couple thousand dollars on a structural engineer. Um, and then what this stone mason thinks it will take to stabilize it is essentially to remove the roof. Um, s- kind of stabilize what. I was gonna call it the foundation, but that's probably an uh an overstatement, essentially shore up the bottom of those exterior stone walls, remove the roof. And then drill down through the stone and install rebar in it, so essentially create a reinforced masonry structure and then re-point the exterior. Um, and also add some, you know, to replace the doors essentially. Um. And then we could, you know, this, this, oh, I was gonna say the sky's the limit, um, we could spend more than that on accessibility to the site, the interior. And so forth, um. I think it would be reasonable to. Um, to hold back on doing the whole project and instead just to hire a a structural engineer to come in and provide that that input. Um. A wrinkle in this project is that, and I don't know if I have shared this in a council meeting yet, I I know I've talked to the mayor about it, um. But uh, UDOT. Has uh a budget. As part of the next phase of the Little Cotton Canyon EIS. For cultural resources impact mitigation. Um, and the town is going to get. Uh, if if UDOT issues a record of decision. That is not no action, so if UDOT decides to do a project in Little Cottonwood, we will get fifteen thousand dollars. Um, toward mitigating impacts to that cultural resource, that's a cultural resource that's on their plan. Um. My preference would be to assume that we just have a bigger budget to restore the Tom Moore toilet rather than to. You know, reduce the town's contribution to a project essentially. Um. But that is out there, we don't know what the timing of UDOT's record decision decision is still. Um, and the net effect is that it kind of just puts the project up in the air because we don't know what our our budget for it is, so anyways. Um. I've, I, you know, we can, I can live with uh reducing the budget for that project for the time being, and I, you know, along the same lines of. Taking the community center feasibility study out of. The fiscal year twenty-four budget and section of the projects plan. Until we develop the project further or develop a project further. But, you know, I can live with that, uh, I mean, the likelihood that we execute the Tom Moore toilet project this summer is, you know, shrinking. Uh, by the hour, um.
Well, and could the feasibility study include not only stabilizing the structure, but. Um, you know, some a- assessment of, is it really actually gonna be realistic to turn it into a toilet? And and some. Some path to to that end.
And that, I think we're probably talking about more than a couple thousand dollars, um, as I'm sure you are aware, I I would love to do that kind of a project on that building, it's just, you know, that is. Kind of beyond the depth of resources that we've contemplated investing in it, but it would certainly take. Yeah, I s. It would take more than two thousand dollars, I would think, so I think if you wanted to leave it in there at ten thousand dollars. And then, you know, the way this would work is we would. Go out and collect a couple telephone bids on feasibility studies and see if ten thousand uh will get us a reasonable product, and. We might have to come back to the council, so.
Including an actual working toilet.
Right, right.
Sounds good to me. You know, ten thousand bucks is, I I can see to, you know, get the answers to all those questions. Um, so we're not really actually going ahead with the project, we're gonna study it, studies uh structurally stabilize in the building and. Assess whether there is a path to, uh, you know, a realistic path to turning it into a to- the functional restroom.
Yeah.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, I like that.
Me too.
Well, let me just ask you a couple of questions of clarification. Uh, one, in the ten thousand dollars, Chris, would you envision that that would allow you to stabilize it this year? Or is that just for a study, study purposes?
That's just, that's just for a study.
And do you have any estimate of what it would cost to stabilize it? Uh, you know, just do the stabilization, not to turn it into a functioning toilet?
Twenty-five thousand dollars is an estimate from October of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, I I I thought that was higher than the stabilization, but you're saying just to stabilize is twenty-five grand?
That was the, that was the bottom of the range that he quoted us.
Okay.
Um, but the top, the top of the range included. Um. Mostly a. Like an ADA accessibility scheme, um, so a bunch of concrete and, you know, forming and all that.
And and what's your uh? Fear factor on the thing falling down this summer?
You know, it's not really that high, to be honest with you, I mean, the really glaring component of the exterior of that structure is the wet, the southwest corner. Um, and it makes it appear as the the whole thing is a house of cards. Um, and that is actually. There's just a limited section of that south wall that's kind of free-floating, and the the bulk of that structure around the doors. Is supported from underneath, so if you actually get up close to that and look at it, you can see the interior west wall. Um, and the roof is obviously in terrible shape, um. I don't really have a strong reason to assume that it's just gonna cease to exist over the next twelve months and. Um. In all likelihood, this stone mason wouldn't be ready to do the work until, like, getting it done. You know, by the time winter is really set in is getting less and less likely, just due to their scheduling. Um. So, uh, y- you know, if it were to, if we were to plan for it to be executed. So, you know, if it were to, if we were to plan for it to be executed in June of next year, you know, I can live with that. It would give us time to do a feasibility study to, you know, determine once and for all whether it has any future function. We might be in a better position and not, not suffer any significant additional deterioration.
Okay, I, I got it. And then just last question. On the funds available from UDOT, I'm assuming that if we execute it, that we can only get those funds if we haven't executed it yet. Is that correct? We can't apply X post after we've actually fixed it.
Uh, I don't know. I don't know, but that's certainly it's either one or the other. I know what you're asking and, and it's either one or the other, so.
All right. And then last, just a comment, which is rather than just reducing it to ten thousand dollars here, I, I would think the right thing to do, given, you know, if I understood John Burns' comments correctly, he said, look, I don't want to just do a study on the community center. And I think similarly the same with the toilet. If we're gonna do a study on sort of a master building plan and prioritize it, I would think all those things should be rolled together and then just presented as one thing. I think that means we may spend a fair amount of money on that this summer, which is fine. But it seems to me that, that the piecemeal approach is not as good as taking a look at all of our buildings and saying, here's the priority and here's the urgent stuff.
I, 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 not to be argumentative though, but you know, I think that the master facilities plan, you know, that, that all of the individual building studies don't have to have been done by the same person. And I think if we can knock off a couple of them, it's a start. And then we can fill in some of the other blanks as we're going along. So, you know, funding the, the, sort of the bottom rung studies individually seems cautious and prudent to me, rather than, because I think it could take a while to try to cobble together what the big picture looks like. So at least we've started to develop some of the pieces that'll jigsaw into the bigger plan. So I'd be for going ahead with those smaller studies, but.
Well, I think that's probably the way you'd execute it anyway, John. I, I, I think what I'm really saying is, do you, and, and that's partially to you, John, and partially to you, Chris, do you think it's realistic to, in the next six or eight months, actually get a comprehensive plan of what we need to do for our buildings, you know, in the town of Alpa?
I think it's realistic to start a project. I don't, I'm not confident we should expect a project to be completed.
I think that's, I think that's exactly right.
Yeah.
That may do.
Okay.
And I, and I just want to add that, you know, like Jen and I talked to John Byrne about this for a while yesterday, and I think we, what, Jen and I appreciate where John's coming from and, you know, can live with all these recommendations or proposed changes. You know, whether we have a community center feasibility study for seventy-five thousand dollars approved in the plan or, or it's moved down to future projects and we come back to the council to get buy-in on a, on a project, on the scope of work that we'd like to move forward with. You know, we're not gonna execute a project like this without getting council input on it, regardless of whether the, the funds are approved to be spent or not. So that's just sort of an anecdotal reassurance. And certainly a lot of legislative bodies wouldn't take that sort of thing to the bank from staff. But I do want to assure you that, you know, these are, these are some of the most important projects the town will do in the medium term. And, you know, we, we want, we'll do it in the light of day, absolutely, so.
Yeah, and I, I certainly know behaviorally, that's the way you guys behave, so there's no, no doubt about that. I did have one other question, Chris, which is at the last budget committee. One of the things that we noted is we have a pretty good handle on future expenditures on the water fund, but not so much for the sewer fund. So I was sort of expecting that you might be adding a project in here to actually do, you know, have a professional come in and do that forward planning assessment on the sewer infrastructure. Did you think about that? You just say, I can't possibly execute that next year? I mean, where are you on that?
Uh, I'm, I'm not anywhere. It, it just, it didn't stay high enough on the priority list. In the new fiscal year, we have to take some action to figure out our approach to the sewer system in the future. And that involves, you know, a number of things from day-to-day operations to long-term planning. So, you know, the, the sewer program is not something I've wrapped my head around yet, to be honest, just in the last three weeks. But it's clearly, I mean, we have a, you know, sophisticated approach to the water system and we don't have one to this, well, that might not be safe to say. We do not have as sophisticated an approach to the sewer system as we do to the water system and we ought to seek to equalize that, I think.
And, and just to maybe provide some comfort, I think, I think that's right, Chris. And just to, you know, there's nothing that says that we can't do mid-year approvals
Right.
for a project that isn't even on the, we may propose this later list. I mean, a project could come in from right field and it makes sense. It's easy enough for you to come and get town, I mean, we meet every month. So there's nothing that keeps us from, from considering and funding a project that's not even on the future list. It's just, you know, would be introduced at some point. Like, if there was an issue that came up about the sewer, you know, we'd be able to deal with it in a, in a contemporary, contemporaneous manner.
Well.
Yeah, that's, that's true. I mean, one of the reasons we, in the past, Harris had us kind of, I want to say December, and Jen could correct me on this, but we always have a mid-year review of the budget to adopt things that come up. And we have the ability to change things on our budget. So what we are proving here, this today is not final, it's just the recommendation going forward, but we can always amend the budget. So.
But we, we need a, we need a placeholder for these things, so, and we, it is amended, it doesn't start from a blank and move to a finite number. Let's, let's have some sort of placeholder for it. Yeah. Just to add, what's my concern that's underlying most of these questions i- is the following? Is if you look at the capital budget and, and if we move the seventy-five thousand out, it will reduce it. But we've sort of got, this year we executed about a hundred and fifteen thousand. Next year, we had proposed about eight hundred and fifty or seven seventy-five, if we take out the, the seventy-five grand. That's a huge increase in expenditure. I think what John is proposing is exactly correct. It is, it, it's what I'll call a program approach to it as opposed to a project approach to it. So a program being a series of projects that are looked at holistically and we consider what our execution capacity is as well as our budget capacity. And also the urgency of, of, of the timing of these things. So I, I, I think that's all much better program and project execution. And I think that's, that's prudent. The concern that I have is actually in the manpower side. It is looking at trying to increase just from what we had to the eight fifty. Looks challenging. I think it's executable this year. But on top of that, to actually put a program together to do that, I'm guessing we're maybe gonna need some temporary manpower increase or, or whatever. And I'm not proposing that now, I'm just noting that in order to execute at the level that we're talking about, we may need to do something on the, on the manpower side as well as just on the capital, you know, the capital expenditure side.
Yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying and, and I think we all recognize that, you know, we can't, you know, without turning into a big staffing discussion. I mean, obviously, we're still a man down within the office and I think, you know, we do need to address that. I also think just marrying Elise's comment with Roger, I think we have a good list of placeholders. But I think what Elise was saying, you know, if something comes up and it's compelling, we're willing to add it to the list as well. So it's really about both. We're lucky to have this good list of placeholders and, but we're not close-minded to something else coming in.
So can I just summarize what I think I'm hearing from the council? Because it'll help me later with numbers as we change things, that there was comfort of including ten thousand dollars for further study? And that was the number that we wanted?
For Tom Moore?
And yeah, it would be in that code line forty-five, forty-five, seven fifty, which is kind of community center library. That's the number I have in my side budget to help us as we make amendments later. Is that, is that what I'm hearing from everybody that we're comfortable with?
Ten K as opposed to a hundred K?
We also want to have money for it. No, I guess that's right. And then we're gonna move the seventy-five thousand down to the, the placeholder list.
Yeah, so basically I'm exchanging the seventy-five and the twenty-five are kind of coming off and being pulled down below. And there's a ten thousand dollar line item.
That is green lighted to go ahead and spend, and that's on the study for the Tom Moore. Right, we're proving that today.
That's, that's good with everybody. Okay, just making, making sure of that. Okay, I've got it straight. So, um, on the, just to finish going through the highlighted changes real quick, because we have a couple other big subjects for us to talk about with five minutes. The, we have an updated number for interest in the capital fund reserve. The use of the reserve funds in the water budget is five hundred and two thousand. Water fund expenditures, no major changes here. We have a small increase due to the contract with John in professional and technical services. But all these others are very minor updates. On the sewer fund, when I last presented the budget, I hadn't really dived in to that budget as much as I should have. And so when I did do that and I got basically better disposal cost estimates from Cottonwood Improvement, the number for the disposals went up to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, my projection. And so I had to raise the revenue to a hundred and eighty-five. All the rest of the modifications here are minor. I do want to point out, because it's relevant to the conversation you were just having, is that we do have ten thousand dollars for infrastructure replacement. And we also have almost nine thousand dollars here in professional services. But this line item, I, I don't have a hard, we don't have a plan yet of what that looks like, but there is nine thousand dollars for which we could potentially start a study on the sewer system. So there's a, I don't know what that's actually gonna cost, because we haven't done much on that. But that number is in there. Those were the changes in the budgets, the four budgets. I am quickly gonna go through the water and sewer rates. Get right to that report. So I think the key highlights of what I want to point out to you are in the rates, we have a twelve percent increase. Last year, we had a fifteen percent increase, so I'm trying to, you know, keep that modest. The other main point, so you're, you know, you're the, if you look down here, I have an example of a residential home. So we bill on a quarterly basis. So, you know, what folks are gonna see is that their quarterly bills are gonna go from three fifteen to three fifty-three. Overage charges, I have built in a twenty percent increase on those. And just as a reminder, when we updated our, with the residential and commercial and how we were charging for water to equalize it, we initially kind of brought the cost of the overage water, the per thousand gallon number down just to, you know, ease into that transition and with the understanding that we would slowly build that back up. So this is an effect to that. On the sewer rates, a twenty-eight percent increase here this year. Last year, we had a fifteen percent increase, just for reference. What people are gonna, what, you know, a single-family home is gonna see is a change in their quarterly bill from one ninety-six to two fifty-one. This is mainly, I think, as John's kind of characterized it in the past, is passing the cost of the disposals to the customer, really. And Cottonwood Improvement District has been, their rates have been changing every six months. So I'm expecting a rate change here shortly and then another one in January as well. So I've, they've given me some indication and some projections on what those numbers are gonna be, so I've built those in so that we don't fall short.
What kind of capital charge do you have in this, this one, this rate structure?
Not sure I understand the question.
Well, the ten thousand that you had in the water fund rate structure for, it's sort of the capital portion of the rate structure?
Yep.
Is there an analogous number in the sewer fund or are we just running it, it's sort of no real additions to the capital account?
No, there's ten thousand dollars in there, in the sewer. That, the ten thousand was for the sewer and then there was, yes, sorry, that was the, the amount for the sewer. The water, I believe, is ninety thousand into capital improvement.
My mistake, thanks.
No, I was, I was going through it really quickly, so. Um, that's all I was going to reflect on regarding water and sewer unless anybody wants, wants to ask any questions.
I think that's the end of your material intended to present, is that correct?
No.
Oh, no, oh.
No. I also wanted the council to be able to talk about the tax.
Oh, yes, the tax.
The tax increases, but it is ten o'clock. And so I think we should hold our public hearings and save that conversation for.
After, after we've heard publics talk about that.
Yeah, I think so, I think so. So thank you guys, that was a whirlwind.
Thank you.
We'll talk more on the tax increases.
Yeah, this represents a lot of work on Jen and Chris's part.
Yeah, Jen, I just wanted to say, in the last year, you've really stepped up. I've watched Kate do this, I've watched other people do, Piper do this, and you're doing an excellent job. You're here.
It was probably information overload for you guys, so thanks for getting through it and paying attention. And asking good questions.
With that, I would like to adjourn this meeting and have a five-minute break until the next one. Do we have to get a motion to adjourn or do I can just adjourn it? Anybody know the rules?
You'd have a motion.
All right, I have a motion, all right.
I move, we adjourn the budget meeting.
Seconded.
And it's a work, it's a work session of the town.
Yeah, okay, it's a work session, all right.
Work session.
Any opposed to journeying the work session? During non-work session is, is adjourned and we'll reconvene at nine oh seven for the.
Mayor, can, can I make a suggestion? Is it possible, since we, I think with public hearings, we really want to go by the book on these and we have the first public hearing at ten, we have the public here. If we'd like to take a break, I'd say maybe let's get through the public hearings and then take a break before the regular meeting.
That's okay.
I was gonna say.
That works for everybody.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
So in that case, I hereby call the town council meeting of June twenty-third, June twenty-first, two thousand and three to order. This meeting will be an electronic meeting without an anchor location pursuant to my determination of document on May twenty-third. And even though it is two minutes early, let's see if we have. And um even though i- is two minutes early, let's see if we have. Some public comments concerning the proposed fiscal twenty-three year-end budget amendments.
And so we have a few attendees that have joined us. Um, attendees, if you want to raise your virtual hand. Uh, to do that, if you um, on the bottom of Zoom, you might have to hover over it. There should be a raise hand option for you to click on and then we can enable you to speak.
Okay, and let's make it clear that the first group of public comments is on the twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And after we've had those, we'll close this element and go to the twenty twenty-four budget. So raise your hand if you're gonna. Comment on the twenty-two, twenty-three. Any hands raised, Jen? In that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing on the. Public comment, er, public comment section on twenty twenty-three budget. And um, okay, so let's get a motion to close that.
I move to close the public hearing on the twenty-two, twenty-three um budget.
Seconded.
Seconded by Sheridan, uh, any opposed? Right, that. Is hereby closed and now we will call to order the. Uh, public hearing on the twenty twenty-four tentative budget and proposed tax rate. And so I suspect there will be some public comments on this. And you see any hands up, Jen or Molly?
Not yet.
Okay, let's give people an opportunity to. Right, I say again, this is the public hearing on the. Tentative twenty twenty fiscal twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, which includes the proposed tax rates.
Maybe I can add while we're waiting that there will also be public hearings on this tentative, the. Fiscal year twenty-four tentative budget on August ninth at six P M. So this is not the only opportunity. For people to make co- public comment on this budget and this, the proposed tax rate.
Okay, so the August ninth meeting is more than. The property tax, it's the uh other, other tax questions as well. Is that right?
Yes, people could comment on tho- I mean, it it depends on if you guys approve those tax increases or not today. Which you are being asked to vote on. So it's mainly focused on the certified tax rate. But you, you know, this budget stays tentative until that gets approved.
Okay, still no um. Persons uh wishing to comment on the uh F Y twenty twenty-four tenetty pact.
Have we received written comment?
We did receive written comment from Cliff Curry. Um. I was gonna report on that in the regular part of the meeting, but I think it's it's reflective of this as well. Um, so Cliff Curry did submit written comment that was circulated. To the council, um, that will be a part of this meeting's minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I just got an email that um, looks like Margaret is trying to join the meeting and maybe just having some. Technical difficulty, so I'm not sure if she plans to make a comment, but.
I don't think she was, I doubt that she was making, intending to make a comment on the uh. On the budget issue, although she might want, oh. Correct, she says. So I verified that. Uh. You've been trying to, having troubles logging in. All right, um, okay, um, and with that, I would like to. Entertain a motion to adjourn the public um. Public hearing on the twenty twenty-four tenetty budget.
So moved.
Any opposed? Okay, in that case, it is adjourned. And now we'll have a five-minute break and we'll convene at fourteen after the hour.
We have one more public hearing, I'm sorry.
Oh, we have another public hearing?
You do.
Somehow.
On the special service district fiscal year twenty-four budget. And the propose, and the certified tax rate for that.
Sorry.
So, no, that's okay. This isn't, this is one that, you know, is, we're, we're trying to keep it on the books, but to follow, you know, we have to have a.
Oh, yes, this is a.
Even though it's all zeros, we still have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, okay. Are there any public? Uh, any comments on on? This uh phantom uh budget item. All right, but in the absence of that, I will um close that meeting or close that public hearing. And now we'll have the five-minute break.
Uh, just a motion, a first and a second, please.
Oh, okay.
Do we, do we don't want to approve that? We don't wanna approve the uh.
No, it's just open, it's just closing that public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
A second.
Any, any opposed? All right, in that case, that public hearing is closed. And we will now have the promised five-minute break, reconvened fifteen after, all right.
So, um, stand up, walk around. But I'm gonna come in here and listen.
Okay, I would like to call to order the town council, the regular town council meeting of June twenty first, two thousand twenty three. And we're convened today to have consider many, many items, twenty items on the on the agenda. And we will start with citizen input.
So we did, I just reported on this, but I was planning on reporting it now, so I'm gonna do it again. We did receive one written comment from Cliff Curry regarding, it was mainly focused on the proposed tax increases. So that comment has been distributed to the council and will be reflected in the minutes of this meeting. And then again, if anybody, any of the attendees would like to make a public comment, if you hover over the bottom part of your Zoom screen, there is a raise hand option. If you click on that, we can enable you to speak. I think we are probably okay there, move on.
Okay. So the Utah Government Trust renewal with Josh McPhill, is he, is he here or is he, are we delayed on that?
We're gonna be delayed on that one.
All right, in that case, and Mike Mon is is unavailable today. So in that case, we'll go to the consent agenda and the meeting minutes and the staff and finance reports, and I would open any discussion for that or and with X with the hope that we can approve it as amended. So any discussions on the consent agenda?
I had one little nitpick on the minutes, which of course aren't where they're supposed to be, but in one of them, Chris referenced that the Budget Committee had been working on the new CapEx form for the prior few months, or the minutes say that. But I actually went back and listened, it's at minute sixteen twenty seconds in that meeting, he actually said that the Capital Projects Committee had been working on the new CapEx form for a few months.
Is it in this section, John, here?
Yeah. All these papers, of course, it's not right at hand.
It's in the first, it's in that first paragraph. First full paragraph over the last couple of months, comma, the Budget Committee, yeah. Yep. Right in the middle of the paragraph. That one.
For over the last couple of months, the Budget Committee, I actually went back and listened to the YouTube, to watch the YouTube, and, and he actually said the Capital Projects Committee there. And I do think that's an important distinction worth changing.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're, you're just proposed is that budget be deleted in its capital projects, maybe?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Great. Any, any other comments on the consent agenda? All right, in that case, uh, do we need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is that accurate, Jen?
Yes, including the minutes of May ten with, I'll go back and double check that edit, but I'm sure if John just listened to it, that it's probably a typo on my part and make that, make that edit in the final minutes.
So I, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the correction of the meeting minutes on page forty nine as noted.
Second.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. The consent agenda has been approved with as amended. Okay, how about questions regarding the departmental reports?
This is a general question that goes back to our work session, but I wondered if I might ask Mike Mori a bit about how we're ticketing less based on the revenue with regard to courts because of the parking system, I just wanted to get his take on that, if I may, sorry to put you on the spot, Mike.
No, not at all. I think it's fair to say that, you know, since the inception of the overnight permit parking program, we've found that the parking situation in town to be much more orderly. The number of improperly parked overnight vehicles in Alta has drastically reduced the last two years and you know, thus the lowered enforcement.
Thank you for that articulation, Mike, much better than I did.
Well, that's, I mean, what brings, that brings to mind that the parking program that was implemented two years ago has really made a lot of positive changes to our community. And the fact that there are fewer tickets being issued, fewer infractions is just one manifestation of that. I mean, congestion's way down. The unhappiness level is way down. So I think collectively, our community has done a good thing there.
Yeah, yeah. The question wasn't asked, but Jen did comment earlier about court revenues probably being lower. One thing that I would say is probably fair to expect this summer would be a more directed effort towards enforcing speeding, I don't know if you've looked out the window lately, but we, we have a problem.
Any chance of temporary speed bumps?
I can ask UDOT if they are available.
Okay. Because in my opinion, that has helped in the past, and then they went away and and the speeds went up.
Well, there's, there's two issues that go along with the temporary bumps, one is the noise that they create, so the placement of them is an issue. The second is you have a level of construction type vehicles going up and down the highway definitely takes its toll on on those devices, so you know, we're seeing a fair amount of front end loader traffic and all that, we wanna, we wanna time that request out.
Yeah, well, fortunately, we don't have a new lift going in this summer. And that should reduce the amount of construction type vehicles going up and down highways, so.
Well, we'll, we'll talk to you, Todd, about it.
Yeah, great.
May I ask a quick follow up and not to take us too far afield, but Mike, after having some conversations with a good friend who works at UDOT, I'm, I'm curious, from your perspective, and again, I'm not trying to put you in the hot seat. If we change the closing times rather than ten o'clock at night to midnight and rather than eight thirty in the morning opening to eight, would you see significant immediate problems with that? This is kind of a niggling question I have in my brain about how we handle it.
I, I'm sorry, I don't know if everybody else saw what I saw, but you cut out Sheridan.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, so I was asking, just thinking ahead to next season, if we change the closing times in the canyon overnight from rather than a ten PM closing to a midnight or twelve thirty closing, and rather than an eight thirty opening to an eight AM opening, do you see like immediate problems with that kind of a change, and I know that this is not necessarily your bailiwick, but I'm curious. And the reason that I ask is I'm thinking about how a lot of planes come in kind of between that ten PM to midnight or ten PM to one AM hours. I'm just, I'm just thinking ahead to the season and what impact it would have on your department.
Yeah, so I, I assume you're talking about road closure, interlodge closure scenarios. Um, yeah, generally speaking, you know, when you push to an earlier closing time, there's some benefit that comes out of it, you know, it puts us in a position of safety while we still have, you know, staff available to affect the closure. But it comes at a cost to the lodging community, and we definitely have a few residents who, you know, commute during evening hours to jobs in the valley or, or in Summit County in some cases, and it's a hardship for them. We've talked to Lori about that, you know, she factors that in heavily under decisions, and I, I think by and large, they try and make the closure situational based on the, what they think the hazard is and the available resources.
Thank you.
Great. Let's see. I've forgotten exactly where we were on the agenda at that point, is this comments on the
I think we're up to the mayor's report.
Yeah, okay, in that case, we'll do the mayor's report. And to do that, I'm going to try something a little bit different here. I'm going to share my screen if I can get the proper document up. Yes. Okay. I have quite a few items on my agenda, the biggest event in the town for in four plus decades is retirement of our town administrator, John Goldner. We, when summer comes, we plan to have a public recognition of his long service and substantial contribution to the quality of life in our community, and I hope this, that, that all will attend and give him the proper send off that he deserves. Related is the appointment of an interim town manager, Chris Colley. After a geographically broad search, we settled on a local person. Local but and New England immigrant. And Chris will be in this position till sometime next year, at which point we, Chris and the rest of us will decide whether this is good for, for him or not. And hopefully it won't be burned out by then. The Utah Governor invited a group of snow fighters, the, the, his term or his staff's term, to his mansion on May thirtieth to honor and thank them for keeping the Little Cottonwood Canyon safe and functional during the winter with its record seventy five feet of snow. The invitation included Mike Mori, Ted Spencer, Sarah McCloskey, Chris Colley, and their significant companions. It was a memorable event that included a tour of their hundred year, hundred plus year old mansion, a red iguana catered dinner, and remarks by the governor. We presented him a remembrance of this winter, which was a hundred and five millimeter shell casing, which they seem to like. There was a similar appreciation event on May seventeenth sponsored by the Wasatch Front Back Country Alliance at the uh, is it called the Golden Hills Park, Polly? And that was for the, that was to honor those people, the Little Cottonwood and Big Cottonwood workers. We settled on a town administration, town, we settled on the town administration, the local service, local shuttle for this winter, and I think Sheridan may want to have something to say about that more later. But UTA has told us they will not return to the service of the twenty twenty one, twenty two level, but keep it at the twenty twenty two, twenty three level and will not provide bus service beyond the Wildcat lot. Last season's shuttle service was very popular as indicated by Tom Schneider's report that there were twelve thousand riders per month in midwinter. And significantly, Elise reported the most frequently asked question by people buying season passes was, will the town shuttle run again? The council mayor's meeting was, oh, the council mayor's meeting will be at Alta on July twentieth, hasn't been here for some time. It'll be an opportunity to show off our town as a beautiful place that it is and emphasize the fragility of that beauty. The Wasatch Front Regional Council met on May twenty fifth to consider adopting a regional transportation plan. A large, well organized turnout of anti-gondola folks attended, and some made public comments advocating rejection of the transportation plan because it included the gondola. However, the council adopted the plan with a caveat that phase one, phase one is increased busing and towing, and phase two, snowsheds should be completed before starting on phase three, the gondola. Three, next, three citizens have declared their candidacy for the November's Town Council election. Two of our incumbents, Elise and Sharon, and one non-incumbent, Dan Schilling. The election will be held on November twenty first, which is later than originally scheduled to accommodate a primary for a recently opened congressional seat. This may have some effect on the number of people and, and the number of people in town, although the voting will be by mail. The June seventh Budget Committee met leading to the work session immediately preceding this meeting. Speaking of budgets, we are exhausting our staff, especially with this, the winter of the great snow. We need to add people and the jobs are not getting smaller, they're getting larger. We are once again looking at the prospect of a community center, and we discussed that in the Budget Committee meeting. In two thousand and three, the town commissioned an architectural study of a building that would occupy the space of our current multipurpose buil- building. We have, have we have an opportunity for that building and many other functions, that building that was conceptualized a couple of years ago, and it was update, this architectural study was updated to have a projected cost of rebuilding that structure at four million dollars. Our next meeting will be July twelfth at two PM, potentially a hybrid.
Can I interrupt? That meeting is actually scheduled for three PM.
Uh huh. Okay.
If we have a work session or something before, it would start at two, but that it, it will start at three.
Got it, okay. And if we could make it happen, we could potentially make this a hybrid. And the astronomy report for the day. Today is northern hemisphere summer solstice, longest duration of sunlight of the year for those of us north of latitude twenty three and a half degrees. So, so, and for those joining us from the tip of Baja California or Taiwan will find that a vertical stake will cast no shadow at solar noon today. And from now on until December twenty first, the daylight will be getting shorter. Something that I'm not looking forward to. All right, that ends my mayor's report and has any comments, questions? Clarifications, rebuttals? All right, has Josh McPhill?
He'll, he won't be able to join us till about eleven, so.
Oh, until eleven? Okay, so another half hour. All right, so let's now launch into the, the meat of this meeting with the discussion and possible action to approve Resolution twenty twenty three R eight for the fiscal year twenty three budget.
Would you like me to just kind of provide a quick overview of?
Yeah, I wanted to say something about that in a couple of sentences, and then John wanted to weigh in.
Yep. Okay, so in the consent agenda, there was a report that focused on the three tax options that we're looking at with this budget property. A property tax increase, resort, increase of point one percent, and the transient municipal room tax of one percent. So this, the ordinance you have before you, twenty twenty three zero four is specific to the point one percent resort tax. This is a tax that the council has considered in the past, but didn't feel that they needed it at that time. We have our fiscal year twenty four budget does include this, the revenue from this tax. But I'm prepared today with whatever decision the council makes, we'll be able to work with that. Just as a summary, this is in that report that's in the consent agenda. You can see this table here shows the current sales tax and categories, and you can see the resort tax one point five here, and you can see if we implemented the resort tax that of point one, you can see how this retail sales number, this portion of the tax would go up as well as this portion as well. We do have, just for your consideration, below, I provided some comparables of other similar communities and close communities. And I guess with that, open it up for questions and discussions, John?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Well, we're talking about R eight. You know, the meat, the meat of this is that any amounts in the general fund in excess of the hundred percent rule shall be designated to be used within the Town of Alta Capital Projects Fund. I love this, I mean, I, I think this is a great direction for us to go because it brings some specificity to the situation, and I, at least some of us see one of our really paramount agenda items in the financial world is to start being able to project future fund balances, including capital fund balances. And with this ordinance in place, it makes the it makes the determination of those projections a little bit simpler because there's sort of one less question. There's no longer the question of gee, if the excess, if there's excess above the hundred percent, what are we gonna do with it? Now we're gonna know, it's gonna go to the CapEx fund. So I love this ordinance, and I think we should pass it.
Um, I apologize, I think I jumped agenda items. I think the, and so I think we got a little, I, I, because I had stuff up on my screen regarding agenda item number nine, which is twenty twenty three oh four, so I started talking about that, I'm super sorry if I created I think the agenda item that we actually are on is discussion of possible action to approve Resolution twenty twenty three R eight, which is the FY twenty three budgets, so.
So we'll all try to remember John's comment until we get to the item and, and mess, so the, so the real resolution is on approving the twenty twenty three budget, correct?
Correct.
Well, this doesn't R eight though contain the thing that I was just talking about?
It, in regards to the Capital Project Fund and transfers, John, yes.
Right. No, please.
One of the things that we had talked about in the work session was that I would come back to the council with more information in one of the next two meetings talking about what the hundred percent rule transfer minimum number is to have the council weigh in on whether you want to transfer the full five hundred and eighty one thousand dollars that the budget authorizes or, or a lesser number.
So you don't want to go ahead with adopting this R eight as it's written? Which basically says it's gonna go to the CapEx fund?
Well, my understanding, and I touched base with our legal counsel last night, is the way that's written is that at a minimum, the hundred percent needs to be transferred. And then it does give us leeway if the, I think you guys can see
Yeah, yes.
We're talking about the language down here that says that any amounts in the general fund in excess of the one hundred percent shall be designated used within the Town of Alta, so this is required anyway at a minimum. If we wanted to add some language here, so it'd be an additional language that says up to five hundred eighty one thousand, we, we could add that language in. But I don't believe that legal counsel feels that's necessary unless we prefer it. But we could still have that discussion, and I can get council buy-in on what the transfer is, this doesn't exclude us from that. Correct, Cameron or Polly?
Yeah, that's correct.
Does that make sense to everybody?
I, I'm a little confused, I think what John was suggesting is that the way the resolution is written, you just automatically transfer the amount in excess of a hundred, hundred grand that you don't have to come back to the you should come back and tell us what the number is, but you don't have to come back and ask permission that we should just automatically do that every year. And I think that couples with the comments that John made earlier and at the last Budget Committee meeting, so I just want to repeat those, which is, I think from a standpoint of prudence, what we want to do is to monitor that cash balance and that it is, in his opinion and in mine, desirable to keep that as close to one hundred percent as possible. So I, I, I think the point is, let's not make this more work than it needs to be, it's mandated by law anyway. Why don't you just automatically do it and just report the number later? Did, did I interpret your comments correctly, John?
Absolutely, Craig, you really nailed it there, and, and you know, one of the things, it's not just that there's some definitions to what happens with the excess here, it's that we know we're peg, you know, we're pegging it at a hundred, we've got, we're reserving as much as the state will allow us to reserve. And that's, I, I love that. Yeah, it's been a bit of a mystery, you know, we always kind of guessed, and maybe we're eighty five or ninety percent, and honestly, it's only in the last couple of years that we've even approached a hundred percent. And now we just go to bed knowing that we've, basically we have in the general fund and reserve equal to the most the state will let us reserve for the rainy day fund, the next pandemic. And then the decision as to what to do with the excess has essentially been made, so I, I love the clarity that that brings. That sound right? Craig?
Yeah, I, absolutely, John, it requires, I think, for the level of, of decision that you want, it requires us to project the ending balance in all of our funds, the water, the sewer, and, and, and and the general fund, we're, didn't quite get there this year, I, I will say that compared to last year, Jen has made tremendous progress, and I'm really happy about where we are. And I think next year will, will, will be exactly where you want to be, which is to, to not only have an automatic transfer, but to monitor the projection. to not only have an automatic transfer, but to monitor the projection in that balance through, through the, uh, uh, through the end of the fiscal year.
Jen, are you not comfortable going ahead with this resolution now?
No, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with it. I just want to, if the council wants to contribute more to the capital projects fund, I, you know, I mean, I want to make sure, if there's any council members that want to do that, I want to make sure we hear from them. But it, I'm not hearing anyone chime up, so it sounds like.
At least this year, at least this year, at least this year, I think this is a great way to go. If I understand correctly, maybe there's a question for Cameron. W- we're going to sort of renew this vow annually.
Correct.
So each year we'll have sort of the ability to reconsider this. If we have some special need in the CapEx fund, we could distribute, transfer more from the general fund to it, but um this year, we're all pretty sanguine with the idea of let's just, let's just, you know, ma- max out the, the general fund and then put the rest in the CapEx fund.
Yes, that's all correct.
Okay, any other comments on this resolution? In that case, I'd like to call for the question. All in favor of adopting Resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash eight, signify by aye or holding your hand up?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution adopted.
Um, Cameron, I think I have to do roll call votes on all of these because they're budgetary, right?
Yeah, so, sorry, I was going to jump in, but uh mayor just went faster than I could get my. But yeah, so any, any vote that uh entails uh potential legal uh challenge or legal liability has to be a roll call vote.
Okay.
Mayor Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrne?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous for those present. All right, next item is discussion of possible action to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three O dash four for the imposition of additional tenth of a percent resort community sales tax, which I think John was already speaking to.
Um, I don't think so, but could, could I make a suggestion that we talk about the heavy one first and then talk about the point one?
That's fine with me. In other words, let's go to item ten, discussion of the possible action to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash O dash five for the imposition one percent municipal transient room tax. Okay, and I believe this, what you have on the screen now. Jen, uh change to this.
Well, you, it does pertain um here. So this is our current sales tax rates. And if you notice, if we imposed this one percent transient room tax, here's where it would kind of in, in a chart, here's where it would sit. So you can see that this, and this just applies to lodging. So you can see the current tax rate is thirteen point eight-two, would go, it would increase by one percent. Um, you can see here some comparable values for other communities. The projected revenue I have for fiscal year twenty-four for imposing this tax is a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That's because it's three quarters of a year, just because of the delay in it being enacted, so. Um.
And I also thought the schematic that you provided, the visual of where different comparables tax revenue comes from was very helpful, Jen, and looking at the total taxation picture that we're considering. I don't know if other council found that equally helpful. I think when we're looking at providing services, say for instance, a shuttle throughout the town like Park City does, I find it helpful to see, well, where are they getting their revenue to provide such services and how does that stack up against us?
Are you talking about the pie charts, Sharon?
Um, I, I think that they were actually columns.
Oh, okay.
When I recall.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, columns that actually with the stack had the breakdown color-wise of where the taxes, taxable revenue came from.
Right.
I think you're all looking at my screen, right, that shows that data that Sheridan's referring to?
Uh, yeah, we're, 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 we're still seeing the table, not the uh, not the columns.
And we don't have to go there if, if other council didn't find it um equally insightful. I thought it was helpful for the public to see as well uh what we're grappling with as a town in terms of our revenue streams, our taxable revenue stream.
Yeah, I thought it was helpful too. But more to the, to the point here, or not necessarily more to the point, to the point, what would this, if we enacted this municipal room tax, uh which is nearly fifteen percent, it would put us um in league with Moab, but higher than our nearest neighbors, which are, uh, well, half percent higher than Brighton and two and a half percent higher than uh Snowbird.
So I guess I do want to point out in regards to this data, this is as of current, so I um I don't know if they are actually proposing tax increases
Ah.
to theirs, so um, so these numbers could change depending on what their um process is right now.
Yeah, got it. Okay, more discussion on this.
I'm not sure any, I, I'm happy to defer to anyone who would like to um advocate for the tax. I'm going to make an argument not to do the tax.
I was going to say the same. I'm not really in favor of this tax.
Okay, talk about why. Each of you.
For me, um, you know, it's interesting where we stand versus our o- other our other places. Um, but we all have our own cost structures. Uh, we all have our own different level of service. We provide a very high level of service, particularly the marshal's office. Um, so I, I, I'm a little less compelled by that argument. The argument that gets me is I just don't think that we've demonstrated a need for this money and a need for um to ramp up. You know, the stated purpose of us passing this tax is to grow the capital projects fund faster. And I think that's a great long-term argument. We talked about it last time about how gee, we should think about how much our depreciation is each year. We want to be trying to reserve and spend above that. I, I, I get that totally in the long run. But in the short run, we're ignoring a, a couple of important things. A, between, across all the funds, um I tend to focus on the general fund. Yeah, there's six, seven hundred thousand in it now. We're going to transfer at least five eighty-one. I think there's an argument that that's going to end up being more like eight or nine hundred. We're reserving a hundred and forty thousand in the water fund at a time, a small amount in the sewer fund. So across the whole thing, we're, we're already reserving north of a million dollars a year. Um, towards our future capital needs and, and we really haven't yet demonstrated that we have the ability to deploy that cash. Um, I don't want to, maybe in a timely manner, I don't know. I, I want to be nice. I, you know, we haven't really got a track record of executing projects on the scale of a million dollars worth of them a year. There is already a fund balance this year that's going to be transferred to the various reserve accounts of a million dollars already. Do we really need to make that a million two by passing uh this one percent transient room tax? And, and I just don't think that we do. Um, you know, down the road, to come back and revisit this, if we, you know, actually, you know, establish, A, uh the ability to deploy the money faster than we're reserving it. And B, the other missing link that we have, that I think we all talk about this, and I think there's a lot of buy-in on this, is that we really need to start being able to project our, our, at least some estimate of our future capital fund balances and future waterfront capital uh uh account balances. And, and we haven't gotten there yet. We're working on it. We're working hard. Jen's, you know, done a great job, got an A plus on the audit. Uh, there's a lot of things on the list. But we really haven't gotten very far in terms of projecting future cash balances. And to me, that's the heart of demonstrating need for this tax increase is when we are able to project forward and say, look, oh, there's a hole in the budget coming in two years. Then I think you have a lot more grounds and reason to go ahead and do this one percent increase. But to just grow it from, from, you know, already a million dollars is going to go be set aside this year, to grow that by twenty percent, I just don't think we've laid the basis for it yet. And uh, so I'm, I'm not in favor of going ahead with the one percent. Um, if, if to keep everybody happy, I, I think the same argument applies to the point one frankly. But at the same time, that's such a small amount and it's sort of a housekeeping kind of thing, you know, it, it can be one point six, ours has been one point five. If, if to make everybody feel good and, and have harmony, or today we want to go ahead and do the point one, I, I, I wouldn't advocate against it, but I am advocating against passing the one percent transient room tax.
Basically, you're saying, let's hold this in the reserve until at some time we really seriously need it.
Yeah, I can demonstrate that we need it.
That's how I feel. I, I'm really happy that the staff put this together over the last couple of months so we can compare things. Because we've, in past town council meetings and, you know, past years, we've talked about this transient room tax and, you know, exercising our right to do it, but I don't think we need it right now. Um, we never know when we're going to fall on harder times, you know, COVID was just a few years ago. Who knows what's going to happen? I feel like we should just kind of keep this in our pocket for later. We don't need it right now. Um, we do have a lot of projects in the capital fund that need to happen, but I think like John was saying, until we figure out if that money is going to be spent, I, I feel like we could just hold this one back, especially since we've had comment from our lodging community that they are not in favor of this. Um, and I, you know, the other tax options, I feel like we can, I, I know I'm okay with the point one if we want to do it. I, I feel like we do need to keep up with our property tax, which we are going to do. But this I don't feel like we need right now. And we, like I said, we've had some spoke comments out, you know, against this. And I would like to honor that community that is part of our revenue and they're a big part of our community. Um, if we need this down the road, we can use it, but right now we don't need it.
Okay, um, let me um throw in a consideration here. When we do need it, it would be probably a time when it would be m- most negatively impactful to the community. And what I'm thinking about is a disastrous snow year where the uh amount of um of uh of room uh occupancy is considerably relu- reduced. And that's going to reduce our sales tax revenues and our um room tax uh revenues. In other words, revenues would be um, retailed, reduced a- across the board. And then to, if, and then we would probably need more revenue and impose uh one percent additional tax seems to be kind of uh moving in the wrong direction. Now, tell me why that's a lousy argument.
Well, I, I, I wouldn't dare to, to say that it's a lousy argument, mayor, but well, one of the things that, that's changed since the pandemic started, our recent pandemic started, is that in those days, our general fund reserve, we never challenged the hundred percent mark. You know, my recollection is that we were below fifty percent of what we were allowed to reserve by the state. I didn't go back to check that number and somebody could debate about it if they want. But since the pandemic, we've done a couple of other things, including we've now ramped up our operating reserve, our, our general fund reserve to the maximum allowed by law. We were nowhere near that when the first, when the last pandemic happened. So I think that's a big background change. We're now reserving one, you know, an amount equal to a hundred percent of our yearly revenue. So that, you know, in aggregate, um, you know, we have a full year of tax revenue in reserve. Um, so that's a, that's a really strong position to be in. Second, because this money each year will get transferred into the various capital reserve funds, yeah, in an emergency, you could go raid the capital reserve fund if you need to, but that's not really what the money's for. And once the money's gone to the capital reserve fund, well, certainly water fund you wouldn't raise or the sewer fund you wouldn't raid. You could go raid the capital projects fund if you wanted to, but it's a bad practice and not what we want to be steering towards. So all of the operating type impacts that you mentioned, those are really addressed by having driven our general fund reserve to a hundred percent of the amount, amount allowed by law.
Okay. All right.
Roger, if I might chime in a bit, uh, let me just say, so John, uh, I, I think you raised two different issues. One is from a planning standpoint, we don't quite have, you know, our, e- each fund's reserve projected. And once that is done, it's easier to see how these funds might be prudently dis- displayed. You, you are a hundred percent correct on that. I am sure we will be at that point next year. We're not quite there this year. Uh, I will reiterate the comments I made earlier, which is I think the transparency this year is dramatically improved and, and, and very happy with that progress. Uh, so you are technically correct that we don't have those, those uh projections yet. But I think intuitively, you can sort of expect that we will certainly be there by next year. And uh, and we can anticipate that. The other one I think is a little bit more problematic, whi- whi- which is we haven't demonstrated the ability to execute, particularly on the capital project side. To me, that's a bit of a catch twenty-two. We had a failed, uh, we did a job search for a town manager this year. We failed in that search. Was that because our salary estimate was too low? I don't know. I do know that we're a, a.
Sorry, I would correct you. I don't think we failed in our search for a town manager. We currently have a town manager, so.
Right on. I, I agree with you at least.
Right on. Me too.
Right on.
Okay, uh, then let me rephrase. Uh, we went for an external uh job search. We didn't find any candidates from the outside. Uh, whether that was a function of, of the salary range that we had, I don't know. What I do know is that we're a, a, a man down. And uh, and I know in, and I'm concerned that without an increase in, in our manpower budget, that we won't display that capacity to execute. So I am a little concerned about the catch twenty-two ax- aspect of, well, we can't increase our, our, our budgets until we've demonstrated the ability to, to execute. But without an increase in the manpower budget, it's not clear to me when we'll be able to do that. So just wanted to make those comments, uh.
Could I comment on the last one there?
Sure.
So it's contemporaneous and I, I think what you're saying is, I get that. But that's against the background of this year, we're going to transfer in aggregate more than a million dollars to our reserve funds. And it appears to me the current revenue over expenses is nine hundred grand. So it's, we're only budgeting five eighty-one, three oh three at this point. I largely think that's because, you know, Jen, we just haven't updated the number yet. I think the real number is going to be eight or nine hundred thousand dollars of revenue over expense surplus. So a- again, back to what Elise was saying, I just don't see the need to run that up to a million, one million, two and create a bunch of discord within the community. And I think it is important to try to be respectful of the concerns expressed by the uh, by the lodges.
I agree. And for me, those arguments are compelling enough with regard to the ten basins point tax increase that's proposed. Uh, forgive me, Craig, too. I, I wonder if we could attempt to use language that isn't so masculinist when we talk about uh needing another role or I, and not just to pile in on you about that, but I, I wonder if across the board, we could um, attempt to be thoughtful around that. And I want to also just second the idea that I think Chris Colley is the perfect person for the job. I'm thrilled that he's in this role. This is in no way a, a terrible choice. I think it, from the beginning, the right choice of the right person for the role. So I'm thrilled. Um, I, and don't in any way want to take away from what I think is actually a very successful end choice.
I'm sorry if we're cutting you. I think that's, those are great comments. I'm sorry if we're cutting you. I think that's, those are great comments. I'm sorry for cutting you off, Craig. Did you have more to say?
The only thing that I did want to say in addition. Was that if we look at historically where, uh, uh, the one thing that I think may be a little different about Alta from some of the comparables that Jen has listed. Is the ratio of sort of permanent residents to occasional visitors. Uh, the place that in a large part that shows up is actually in Marshall's budget. Uh, because we have, we, we, and if you look at the historical increases in our budgets. X the capex expenditures that we've talked about, uh, it's actually common Marshall's department. And I, I think that as I have commented before, that as we see huge expenditures. Uh, by UDOT in terms of increasing the transportation use. That that ratio of occasional visitors, the permanent residents is going to continue to increase. And will require additional manpower expenditures. So just anticipating that's going to happen. Uh, none of that says we have to do the increases this year. And of course, it's not my decision. It's a town council. I do think though, the trends are. Fairly clear, particularly with regards to those occasional visitor usage.
I, I think that's, those are very fair comments and um, and I also. You know, embrace the argument you were making a couple of meetings ago about. The relationship between the depreciation of our fixed assets and the amount we're reserving, the amount we're spending. That's still a great. Background, long-term vision. And it's, it's really, I guess I one eightyed on this because. You know, you gotta balance that with what's happening today, what's happening this year. Which is we're maxing out, we're maxed out in what we can reserve for our general fund purposes. We're transferring a million dollars to our various. There's other reserve accounts, uh, you know, that's a pretty rosy picture. I just think it's hard to justify increasing the taxation, especially. When as Elise says, you know, we drew a very adverse reaction from. Um, the commercial properties and not that this isn't a viable option to consider down the road. Just seems like. You know, banging our heads and creating a bunch of discord, um, you know, that it just seems inappropriate. Considering our overall financial position at this time.
And I think it's all about balance, you know, like we. We can't just like our commercial, commercial community, you know, get, brings a revenue into the town and we need to respect that. Um, whether it's the ski area or the lodges, and we need to balance that with what our residents need and our funding for the town and what projects we need to get done. And that, you know, of all the tax things we had, the staff drawn up, this is. Drew the biggest, you know, negative impact. And I, unless we absolutely need this, I don't see any reason to do it right now. Um, it's just not worth it. I think that the other tax increases we're doing will keep us in a good position. Um, it'll keep us up with inflation for right now. We can readdress this issue in a year, once we maybe get a better plan for our capital projects fund, once we get a better plan for other things that happen. I just don't think it's needed right this second. And I, I know. In the budget committee, we have said this many times, so I hope this isn't coming as a surprise that. We were not always in favor of doing all three of these. It was more that we wanted them drawn up by the staff so we could look at them. So I don't think that, you know, we promised that this was going to happen. I just think we wanted to take a look at it. And then we would talk about it in this town council meeting. And so I am not in favor and I'm not going to vote in favor of this resolution for this one percent. And we can keep discussing this or we can maybe call it to a vote. I don't, we've got a lot of other things on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's pretty clear where this is going. So what I recommend is we uh. Call a question on this resolution, which is, uh, I am, uh. Ten on the agenda. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash O dash five. So, um.
Want me to do a roll call vote?
If there's no further discussion.
Yes, please.
Yeah, let's do a roll call vote.
Um, Mayor Burke.
I vote against it.
Councilmember Byrne.
Against.
Councilmember Morgan.
Against.
And Councilmember Davis.
Against.
Great. That resolution. Is not adopted. So now we're going to go back to.
Mayor.
Yes.
Josh McHale from the trust has joined us.
Oh, good.
Do we want to have that presentation now?
You want to do a quick vote on the point one? Have we, have we discussed the point one adequately to, to?
Yeah, I think we, I, I think, while it's still fresh, let's do a vote on the point one.
It seems like there's, I, you know, I think we could all go either way on this. I do, I, you know, in, in the spirit of balance, I think that going ahead with this small one. Um, in addition to the truth in taxation seems reasonable to me. So I'll move that we adopt. Um, oh, four.
Okay.
Second.
All right, in that case, we'll have a, um. I think we've. Discussed that adequately. Let's have a, um. A roll call vote on adopting oh, four.
Mayor Burke.
I.
Councilmember Byrne.
I.
Councilmember Davis.
I.
Councilmember Morgan.
I.
Adopted. Okay. Now we'll go to, um. Item three, Utah Local Government's Trust Renewal. And Josh McHale, can you? Can he be promoted to, um? A, um. Participant, yes. Okay, I see a picture of him. All right, welcome.
Hey, how are you all doing?
Well. It's a nice day.
Uh, well, I will be brief. I know that you guys have a, a big agenda ahead of you. Um, but Jen has invited me to come speak to the council about the town's upcoming insurance renewal, which is, which is set to renew on July first. So I'm going to share my screen with you. And as I go through this, please let me know if you have any questions at all. So. The trust, we're, we're what's called a public agency insurance mutual. We are funded by our members and we only insure member entities and our bylaws only allow us to provide coverage for. Other local government entities. And right now, where I would say we're inside of a little bit of a tough. Insurance market is probably the hardest insurance market, um, that, that we've seen in this generation. But with that being said, too, the trust is a little bit protective and removed from that. And. It's a hard market from the eighties that led us and many, many other insurance pools across the country to come into existence. So we have a couple of focuses this year. We, we're trying to work with each entity to have a designated safety officer. Uh, we have a, a team appreciation and recognition program that we are pushing out to our members to. Try and have safety, uh. A high priority at our member organizations as it relates to workers' comp claims. We are working with many of our members to put in place what's called a budget protection plan, which. Assesses deductibles back to the relative or the respective, um. Departments. And we also are placing a high emphasis on cybersecurity this year because we're continuing to see cyber criminals attempt to breach. Not just the, the servers of our member entities, but. Many of the servers that our member entities are doing business with, so contractors. That. Um, might be doing businesses or doing, providing services for a city. And then when. Payment comes due, they, they hack the, the email server and. They pose, um. Try to be whoever the project manager is and, and. They say, hey, can you send this payment? To this account and. If anything ever like, like that ever happens at the town, Jen is, is going to be on it. Um, she's probably seen stuff that's. The various different attempts and attacks, but always, 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 if you ever send an ACH, just call to verify first. Um, those are the big ones that we're seeing lately. So. We are only include this slide because there's an option to pay online. It's inside of every one of our slide decks, but this is the, the meat and potatoes of what I want to discuss with you. Your liability premium is unchanged going from one year to the next. There's no increase whatsoever. We have a small increase on our property, but it's pretty minimal. And your autos are actually down and that's just due to schedule. Um, adjustments. So the change, and I hope you can work this into your budget, is about a hundred and twenty-four dollars. So Jen, um, do your magic. If you can make that fit. And. That's. That's pretty much everything I wanted to go over with you. I do have a quick. Recap of your coverage with the trust. Oh, and you guys are participating in our trust accountability program. So. Um, our team appreciation program. So you guys will actually be receiving five percent of your liability premium back this year. Which is one thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. So you also have to figure out what to do with your budget with that money. And this is a quick recap of the coverage that you have with the trust. We do your workers' compensation, your autos. Your property, your general liability. And then we provide cyber pollution and crime at no charge. They're just. Full-time coverages to your property policy. Um, when we added that coverage. We never, we have never assessed our members for this. And we want to continue doing so. So we're finding ways to demonstrate to the carriers that do these lines of coverage for us, that our members are good risk. And one of those is making sure that everybody is. Is doing everything they can to avoid cyber and, and crime. Um, you know, fraud internally and, and. Avoiding cyber attacks externally. So. That's everything I have for you. Does the town council, anybody have any questions for me?
Oh, I have one, um. From your standpoint, do you consider us over insured, under insured, or just right insured?
Um, I would say that you might be a little bit, um. Here's the thing, you might not need five million dollars in coverage on from a liability standpoint. I think it's going to be rare. That you're going to have that type of exposure or claim that comes. But our next step down is two million dollars and I don't really feel comfortable having you guys at two million either, just because tour caps. And governmental immunity limits have continued to move upwards. And so I think five million is kind of the happy medium. Um. At some point, will you need more than five million? Perhaps, but I, I don't think that that's coming anytime soon. Um, but I also don't think you're going to, I don't think you've got enough. Uh, you never know. I don't have a crystal ball. Anything could happen, but I think that five million is adequate. And I think the next step down would be inadequate. I, I think you're kind of at the happy medium. I think you're in a good spot with five million.
And, and I'll, in some parts of this country, um. Insurance is being non-renewed because of threats. And they're generally. Largely wildfire threats. Um. We have, um. That, that would threaten our property. Our, how's that working out in our region?
So. The property insurance market as a whole is experiencing the hardest market that we've seen in a really, really long time. Just in twenty twenty-two alone, there was. About ten catastrophes, all that went over one billion dollars in claims. And when these, most of those catastrophes have to involve, they involve, um. You know, natural events like fires and hurricanes and earthquakes, things like that. And the unfortunate part is, is the industry as a whole has not been hedging their bets well enough. And in order for an insurance carrier to be profitable. They need to have about a fifty-five percent loss ratio or less. So that means for every dollar. That they collect in premium, they're paying out about fifty-five cents in claims or less. And the rest of that money is used for. Uh, claims administration costs, um, the administrative fees that come with being a carrier, the additional expenses that go above and beyond just paying a claim. And last year. The industry experienced about a hundred and seven percent loss ratio. So for every dollar paid in a premium, they paid out about a dollar seven in claims. And that left a shortfall of about twenty-seven billion dollars. And so that's why you're seeing a lot of markets pulling out of certain areas. They're, they're pulling their sublimits in, they're increasing their premiums. And we're, we're even seeing it at the trust, the trust's liability insurance, or I'm sorry, our trust property reinsurance. Went up by thirty percent this year. And. While the trust does pretty well, um, I think the state of the trust and, and our pool and our membership is, has done very well. Even with the earthquake we had back in twenty twenty. We paid about a million dollars in claims on that one, but that's very small in comparison to what was claimed paid overall. But part of that has to do with just that we're only dealing with public entities. And then our public entities are big on safety. They're big on safety cultures. They're big on training. And they're big on mitigating risk. And so it's helpful for us because we have that much more of an emphasis. Um, within our membership and, uh, we feel like our pool overall is very healthy. And rather than scaling back coverage and scaling back sublimits, we're always looking for ways to increase coverage and increase sublimits.
Okay, and the last question I have is, um. We were concerned. Last winter about. S- snow load damaging. Some of our buildings. And, um. That is, uh. And that will continue to be a concern to us. Um. And if that's the case, are. You think we're, um, I mean, I've already asked you if we were adequately insured and you said we were just right. Uh, but. Uh, if we had, um. Collapse of a building due to, um, snow load. Um. Would you be ready to step in and?
So. My only recommendation is make sure all of the buildings that you own are scheduled. As long as they're scheduled, you haven't insured, you're okay. Brighton had a building collapse because of snow load. This winter and there was no coverage just because it was never scheduled. It wasn't listed on their property policy. So I would just encourage you to think. Any of your buildings, anything that you want insured, make sure that it's scheduled.
Okay. Okay, any other questions of, uh, Josh?
Thank you for your presentation, Josh. Could you tell us what the next level of coverage up would be? And also what our greatest risk is as municipality that you're helping us ensure for?
Yeah, so your next level up would be ten million dollars on general liability. Um, I don't think you guys have an exposure to footprint that would warrant that. Um, our biggest risk. From a pool standpoint, um, as far as I see it, it's always going to be autos. If you've got city vehicles that are out driving. Um, that's the, the area that we have the most claims. And it's also the area that we have some of the largest claims. So. Keep in mind that if you're driving on city business, if you're driving a city vehicle. That is an area that we see a lot of risk. Another one is swimming pools, um. To my, if I'm remembering correctly, I don't believe the town has a swimming pool.
No.
So I would, I would definitely say autos is where it's at. And. If you ever consider getting a swimming pool, do know that it does come with a lot of exposure, um, just naturally speaking.
It's very, quite unlikely that we will have a swimming pool. As a town.
The other thing I would say is just, just with, there's lots of entities out there that are making land use decisions. And I would just say, you know, consider everything when making land use decisions because. That is a, that is a tough one. And, um, you know, we stand ready to defend you in cases like that, but, um. If you, if you feel like you're kind of in a tough spot, don't hesitate to call our legal hotline. And Jen can help you guys with that and we can make sure that we're giving you the most sound advice and even put you in, in touch with. Attorneys that are ex- experts in, you know, whatever area you're dealing with. And assist in making sure that you're mitigating any risk before making any big decisions. So.
All right, land use decision, for instance, if we were to deny an application for, uh, some, uh, improvement in, in some private land. And then we're sued, is that what you're talking about and?
Yeah.
And yes?
There's quite a, quite a wide array. Uh, one of the losses that we paid for that was quite large was a community that, um, did not allow franchisee. Or, um, companies to come in. They were trying to just keep the old rest. And they didn't want to allow any sort of restaurants to come in.
I see, okay. Got it. Any other questions of Josh?
And then the day that they put up, the town put it, it stopped to it. And, um, it was quite costly. So. Keep in mind that there's, land use can, those types of decisions have a quite broad array, but they can include a, a, a lot of different scenarios.
Okay. John, did you have your hand up to ask a question?
No, but I think, uh, some accolade, uh, for Josh for a great job. You know, no, no premium increase in this market. It's amazing. That's fantastic. Great job, Josh.
Come on, we have another hundred and twenty-four bucks we have to pony up, so.
Yeah.
I would say great job to you guys. Um, the renewals are easiest for me when you guys have a good safety culture and. And when our members are doing what they need to do to keep losses low. So I, we appreciate that and, um, we, we really do appreciate the opportunity to work with. With the town and, um. We've enjoyed working with Jen and. And I know John has moved on to other things and we look forward to continue our relationship and assisting the town however we can.
Great. Right. Okay, well, thank you very much, um. With that, I think we will move on to item number eleven, which is discussion and possible action on resolution twenty twenty-three dash R. Dash nine for the FY twenty-four. Tenity budgets and proposed certified tax rates.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion that maybe do, um? Maybe we postpone this one and get through some of the other, um, items such as the, because they're inputs to this budget.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to maybe delay this and get through, you know, the project's plan and the water and the sewer rate. So if we could just. Um, put this after repealing and replacing the fee schedule, I think it'll work better for everybody.
So you want to reorder the agenda? Which one do you want to go to?
So you'll just go to the, to the, to the next one, the discussion of possible action to approve resolution twenty twenty-three R ten. Altus Special Service District, and we'll go from there, and then, and then we'll just come back once we've done all the. Pieces that fit into the FY twenty-four, we'll get back to that.
That's fine with me. So, um. Let's launch into, um, item twelve. Twenty twenty-three R ten.
And so just as a reminder for everybody, um, you know, this, oh, I had it, I had it up on the screen. Here we are. So this is your resolution here. And, um, the budget is zero, and there's, um, a certain, or the tax rate is zero for this, um. Really, the reason for us to do this is to keep it on the books in case we want to use it in the future.
Okay, um, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash ten.
Okay.
Any discussion? Um, do we have to have a roll call? Okay.
Mayor Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrne.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Okay. Adopted, um. So next, uh, Jenny suggesting thirteen possible action on twenty twenty-three dash R eleven, adopting a twenty-four projects plan?
Yes.
Okay, let's, um, discuss that.
So I think my understanding of what we talked about in the work session. Was that there was a discussion, let's see, to go, I'm gonna go a couple pages down into the details of this plan. So maybe just to start was that. Um, there was a suggestion that we take the twenty-five thousand here and the seventy-five thousand dollars here. And we move them into this future projects, um, category, the conceptual projects that are not quite ready for approval yet. But that we do in the, um, decisions for today, that we do include. A feasibility study for the Tom Moore toilet at the value of ten thousand dollars. So I think that's where we're kind of starting off our discussion. If there's, I don't know if other council members have. Any other comments about the project plan?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, we, uh, adopt the plan as modified by Jen's comments.
Seconded.
Hey. Further discussion? All right, let's take a roll on that.
It's just gonna give you a new number. Sorry. The, so as a result of that, those changes. The. Within your capital project fund budget. The, um, I've changed two numbers. One is the ten thousand dollars for the Tom Moore feasibility study. The other one is our, um, contribution kind of, when you. Bring money in from the general fund, you have to actually have to kind of, um. Also show the, into the capital projects fund, you have to also show within the capital projects fund. That money, um, being, I think, essentially like. Saved, I don't know if that's quite the right word to use, but there is a number in the budget that's changed to two hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, the revenue and the expenditures both equal four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, just. To be, try and be clear on how I'm changing those, those numbers in those budgets, could they reflect back on this project's plan? Uh, roll call vote, Mayor Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrne.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis. Think that was an I, um.
Now, is this eleven, is this eleven we're doing now?
Yes, projects plan, yes, R eleven.
I, I hate to stop us for a second, but remember, we had the little discussion last night. Um, about the end, the last sentence in section one. Where it says the Alta Council, so reconsider this plan at least annually as the projects change and in light of each year's. Annual town progress. And I think. One idea that was floated that I'd be in favor of is linking revisiting this plan. To any time we amend. The current year budget during the year. So we're gonna amend it two or three times during the year. And and Jen, I think this was your, your wish to do it this way as well, that just kind of makes sense to revisit. The CapEx plan when we're amending the current year budget.
And so, and in practice, that's exactly what we do and have been doing, um. And so if we want to modify this language to be more direct.
Well, John, it doesn't say budget progress, it says budget process, and I think. That what you're advocating is actually covered by this sentence.
Budget process, I'm not seeing that.
Uh, last word in that sentence is process.
So the sentence as it currently reads is that Alta Town Council shall reconsider this plan at least annually. As project budgets change and in light of each year's annual town of Alta budget process.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
Good, okay.
Good catch, good catch, Roger.
We, we're in the midst of voting.
Good, good catch. I think that's ample, ample comfort.
Okay. All right, did we actually finish the voting?
No, I have one more council member, Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
All right, okay.
Good job.
All right. Okay, we're on item fourteen, discussion possible action, uh, to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash twelve. Establishing water rates effective July first. And. The water rates are going up, and you had some. Data on that, I guess that was in the, uh, budget committee meeting, wasn't it?
It was in.
Or the work session, rather.
I can get to it, though. Um, so water rates. And water rates.
This is twelve, huh?
So now, yes.
Yeah, R twelve.
So changing the rate from eighty-four twenty-three to ninety-four thirty-seven. Um. Additionally, the overage rates charged has, um, increased by twenty percent. You have, uh, I'm sorry.
As, as a curiosity. Uh, how much, how frequently is this, uh, overage triggered? Uh, you know, what fraction of our. Uh, bill payers have, get into that?
Um, it's mainly something that we see in the high season, um. Or if somebody has, I mean, mainly it's due. You know, it happens in like the winter peak season when most people are here, um, especially with the lodges, that's when it happens. But we also have seen it, um, come into play if. A pool is being refill, you know, emptied and refilled, or somebody has a running toilet. Or, you know, there are other instances that can cause overages certainly to happen.
Okay. All right. Discussion of this one. I mean, basically, we're just keeping up with what it costs to run the water system. Set a fair characterization?
Well, built into the rate structure is a significant contribution to the, uh, water. Um, the wa- that'll result in a balance in the water fund for future capital use, right, Jen? And that's like a hundred and forty thousand bucks? So we're, we're doing better than just. Covering the expenses, we actually are reserving in this account for future capital needs.
Eighty-four thousand is the number, um, that we have in for, uh, future. Infrastructure replacement, future infrastructure replacement.
Well, I consider the, um. Putting together that reserve for, um, for future, uh, repairs is, is part of the. Is really part of the current expended, a current, um, expense.
It is, it is built, that eighty-four thousand dollars is built into the rate structure, but the way, when I set the rates. The number, this two hundred and eighty-six thousand that I'm building my rates off of, this is, you know, this is. What I do is I back out all the capital improvements, those are not included, and then, you know, I do take in. Into consideration, interest and overage charges, and so I, you know, I'm really trying to charge the, the, the customer. The least amount that I need to, to cover those expenses on an annual basis.
Yeah.
And so that's, you know, that's how I get to the two eighty-six.
And the big change here is in this, um. The, the, the thirty K in required water revenue. Okay, further discussions on this? All right, let's call for the question here. All those in favor of adopting. Resolution R dash twelve, establishing water rates effective July first, uh, let's.
Think you want a first and a second.
Oh, I do.
Do a roll call vote.
I'll move we adopt the ordinance as, uh, I'll move that we adopt ordinance, uh, R twelve.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All right.
Mayor Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrne.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yep, adopted. All right, um. Let's see, that was water rates.
Yes, so now we have sewer rates.
Now we have sewer rates, um, R thirteen. All right.
And this was the, um, this is the summary on sewer rates. So we have a twenty-eight percent increase this year, mainly due to disposal cost increases going up significantly. Um. In my report, I showed, um, I kind of ran some various numbers on. Single-family residents, commercial, and then some small, medium, and large commercial users, but for the single-family residents, um, on a quarterly basis. You know, their invoices are gonna, gonna go from one ninety-six to two fifty.
Fifty-five dollar increase per quarter.
Yeah, per quarter. Eighteen per month.
I move we adopt the ordinance.
Seconded.
Seconded, turning. Okay, further discussion? All right, call for the question? Jen, roll call?
Mayor Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrne.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
All right, now to resolution R fourteen, repealing and replacing the fee schedule.
So this action is really, um, just because we've changed the sewer and the water rates. This action is to memorialize that in the fee schedule, and so I sent out a track changes version of that, um. To everyone.
Well, haven't we really, in effect, already adopted the meat of this?
Yes, but you still have to adopt a new fee schedule.
I see, okay. Any discussion on this? All right, I move that we adopt resolution twenty-three dash R dash fourteen.
Seconded.
Okay, let's take a roll call.
Mayor Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrne.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Adopted. Okay, next is. Um, let's see, shall we go back now to, um. Eleven?
Yes, I think that's great. That was kind of what I was thinking we could do.
So that's R nine for tenity, uh, that's for the twenty-four. Two thousand twenty-four tentative budget and proposed certified tax rate. So let's take a look at that.
All right, here. So I think we, I think you guys have gotten, now that we've kind of gotten through all those subset inputs to the budget. The big one left, I think, um, is, well. Unless there's any projects or programs in the budget, the other thing I just want to point out is that, um. To raise the four hundred thousand dollars in property tax revenue, we would set the certified tax rate at point zero zero four. Zero four three, and so I don't know if you want to have further discussion about that. I did send out some charts and graphs on that. Um, I did also find out, there was a comparable in there. For a million dollars in valuation, but one of the things that we, um, as part of the truth and taxation process, one of the things we go through is. Finding out what the average residential value is, which is just short of one point nine million in the town of Alta. That means that we're gonna have an increase of, um, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, um, for that valuation. So that's just a number that hadn't been reported yet in that context, but I just got that information last night. So I figured I would, I would share it, and any future stuff that we send out specific to this, um. For the public hearings in August, I'll, I'll include those numbers.
So if one had a. Piece of property, uh, the assessor, uh, values at two million dollars. The increase in the property tax for that property due to the town's. Um, change would be about seven hundred dollars, correct?
Your math sounds good.
Okay. But we don't know is what. Changes there will be in the other elements, uh, that make up the property tax. Of course, which the largest is, are the schools.
Yeah, so I, oops, going down. Yeah, so mayor's kind of referring to, I make this a little smaller, not bigger. So this is our proposed, so here's our, you know, a schedule of our tax rate, um, tax levies, and so this is the proposed value here. So what the mayor is referring to now is all of these other levies here. So we're unsure whether this is actually in the end going to be the total or not. Um, but part of the public hearing process, um. With scheduling is that we can't, any of these entities that might be proposing an increase. Can't schedule their hearing at the same time as us. And so, um, anyone within those communities could theoretically go to all public hearings. And voice their opinion.
Is it correct? And I believe, John, you characterized it this way for me, that this isn't. And I believe, John, you characterized it this way for me, that this isn't really a, an increase. That Alta is bringing, it's an increase in the amount that Alta will be keeping. From the realist, from the revenue for property tax. Is that an accurate characterization?
Chris, you were shaking your head.
No, this is a proposal to raise the the tax rate, so we're generating, we're collecting more revenue. We're not keeping a different share of it, we're. Does that make sense?
Still just, yeah, so we're still just getting the eleven percent. The eighty-nine percent is still going to the county.
Yes, we don't have the power to change those other levies.
Okay.
Yeah, the, just to be precise, the increase would be a hundred and twenty grand, I think, so the, uh, out of the four. Out of the four hundred projected total.
Yeah, yeah, we're going from two eighty to four hundred, which is fairly substantial increase in. In the, uh, our overall property tax revenue and the rationale is that, uh, the property tax residue is more. You might say, uh. Um. Forecastable than um, sales tax.
But also by fixing the rate, the rise in assessed value works in our favor.
Yes, this four, the four hundred is still an estimate.
Right, so if if assessments go up, like they did two years ago, some of, you know, all of my neighbors went up like thirty percent. At least we're keeping pace with that and not, not getting the benefit of those increases in assessed value.
Uh, so I understand your point better. Thank you, John.
We also haven't done one of these in a number of years, so in my mind. We are trying to keep up a little bit with inflation that's been happening these last couple of years to also. That keep, so the portion of the town is actually receiving as assessed values go up. We are just keeping up with inflation in a way, like I don't think that we are. Generating anything crazy for the town by doing this, we're just keeping up with all the other costs that have gone up over the years. It it's been a while since we've done this.
Believe it's twenty, it was twenty nineteen, we did it in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen.
So. Four years ago. And the, the general idea looking forward is that we would, um. We would reconsider this annually as opposed to sporadically, is that, that the intent?
I think that should always be the intent.
Okay. Me too.
Okay.
And just to recap, so that, uh, our constituents in the wider public understands. We again only keep as a, as a town eleven percent of the total. Tax revenue in this arena, is that correct? Eighty-nine percent. Goes to the county. And we're attempting to create a revenue stream tax-wise that isn't as variable as sales tax. Is that an accurate representation, colleagues?
Um, I, I believe it is.
Yeah, I would say that it's differentiated from sales tax and it it allows. As inflation rises, it allows us to a- at least keep up with inflation as opposed to falling behind. Because all, all, the basic county policy is that if you don't. Do this, you don't get the benefit of increased property tax revenues. As inflation increases the assessed values within the town, you don't get any of that benefit. So by doing this, we're, you turn that around a hundred and eighty degrees and we do get the benefit of rising assessed values within the town.
I, 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 I think, uh, Sheridan, uh, as you mentioned the ratio, the way, I think the way to think about it is. As they increase the total take, in order to keep our ratio constant. We need to do this every year. And and that will keep the ratio at that eleven percent, you know, give or take.
Wait, what, what is eleven percent?
What, that's the percentage of the total amount that the town of Alta gets. Out of the total amount of the revenue raised by the property tax.
Hmm. I, I think the number is less than that, but we'll go over that later. That is, I think that the fraction of our property tax that goes to the town is not eleven percent, but around six.
Yeah, it's really small, it's.
Yeah.
All right. It's seven.
Just, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't look at the ratio. My only point was, as they increase the amount due to inflation, if we don't do this truth and taxation. That ratio will continue to decrease.
Right. That.
That was my point.
Yeah. Chris has his hand up.
Yeah, I just, uh, um, wanted to respond to something Sheridan said about the way that, you know, we keep a portion of the. Property tax collected in Alta and the rest goes elsewhere. Sheridan, I think you said the rest of it goes to the county and that's just not quite true. It is true that the county collects all the property taxes and then distributes those property taxes. Um, so the county does keep some. Uh, of the property tax revenue collected in Alta, but then it distributes a great deal of it to. Um, you know, unified fire service area, um, the school district and so forth, so. You know, we are, we are about one of several taxing entities that collect property tax in Alta.
Yeah, and I've, I've got some data on that, um, of our property tax bill, fifty-seven percent goes to schools. Fifteen percent to the county. Thirteen percent to, um. UFA. Uh, and then the next largest piece is, is the town of Alta, which is six percent, and then library. Water conservation. Mosquito, mosquitoes, and, uh, yeah, actually mosquitoes don't actually collect it. Um, and, uh, the assessor gets two percent. Overhead essentially. So. Uh, I mean, one way to look at this is that while the property tax. Increase for the town looks significant. It's. The amount of property tax increase as a percentage of your total tax bill due to this change in the town. Uh, is quite small. But what we don't know is how everybody else is going to raise their rate, so. There we are. Okay, um, further discussion on this?
If you're done talking about rates, I can just, um, reflect upon a couple other changes that we've made during the meeting. To make sure everybody's on board with what we're passing in the edits that have been made to. Um, the budget for FY twenty-four so far that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So. I have, oops, I'm sorry. Okay. So this number here. For the tax. Um, revenue, or sorry, sales tax revenue. Has been changed from this. Two million to one point eight six eight, and that is because, um, we have one point eight million in. Current sales tax, we've added on the point one percent resort tax. Um, and so that's the total of those two. What that also does is I've changed one other number in the general fund budget. Which is the contribution to the capital projects fund. So on. Page. Here. The transfer to the capital projects fund, this number has gone from four hundred and forty-four thousand to three hundred thousand. And that basically ends, it it zeros out our, our budget, which is, um, one of the requirements in approving a budget.
Okay, and it went down because we.
Are taking in less revenue.
Yeah, and that's because we're taking, and we're taking in less revenue than projected because we did not enact the one percent. Transient room tax, correct?
So I just wanted to reflect those two changes, um, on the. Capital projects fund budget. I have changed. The hundred thousand here. For, that was previously the Tom Moore Toilet and the Community Center, this has been changed to ten thousand dollars. And it represents a feasibility study for the Tom Moore Toilet. This number here. Has changed from two fifty-nine to two oh five thousand. And then that, that budget zeros out, so just two changes on that budget. Uh, we have not changed anything on this water revenue or expenditures. Or the sewer fund revenue or the sewer fund expenditures, so basically you're gonna have four numbers that I will update. That I've heard of so far from the council.
Seems correct to me.
Okay. Um.
Sorry.
Any, any further discussion on? On the, um, on R nine? Any budget and certified tax rate? Okay, so let's go for the.
Go for the. Be approve O nine, uh, subject to the changes Jen just, uh, went over.
Seconded.
All right, let's, um. Roll call this one?
Mayor Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrne.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Okay. Resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three dash R dash nine is.
Oh, is there's. Is Carolyn here? And I'm not seeing her, I heard somebody else say aye. Oh, no, okay. Sorry, there was a delayed sound somewhere.
Yeah. Squeaky chair. Okay.
It was me, I was repositioning my cooler.
Does I.
All right. Item seventeen on the agenda, discussion possible action regarding, um, resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash fifteen. Establishing an ethical pledge and conflict of interest policy for employees and elected officials. You gonna speak to this, Chris?
Uh. I am not prepared to speak to this.
All right, okay. Then, uh, I.
I know someone that is very well prepared.
Okay, John.
I, uh, I went through this suit closely and, um, I think they've done a great job and they've. Made the ordinance conform to exactly what we asked them to do, which basically is follow state law.
Follow state law.
I've read, I've read it quite closely, I'm comfortable, um, advocating it, I'm comfortable signing the forms.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sheridan or Elise?
I'm good.
All right.
Thank you for your attention to it, John.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, just to reflect at last meeting, um, it wasn't clear to me that this, um, I thought the mayor had approval to approve these policies. But in reading more closely with, um. The state auditor's materials, um, they had asked that the full council approved this, so this is, you know, we're just doing that due diligence and bringing it forward to all of them.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right, so let's call for the question on. R fifteen.
I move that we adopt R fifteen.
All right.
Second.
All right, let's, um, roll call.
I don't think we need it on this one.
We don't, okay, then. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed, none, adopted. All right, I, item eighteen, possible action on. Resolution R sixteen, approving the ILL related and. Conduct of CBDG and HUD programs. Maybe this is the one, Chris, that I thought you were, were prepared to speak to.
Uh, yes, I can, um, I can do my best on this one, I could do better on this one than the last one.
All right.
So, the. You know, federal housing and urban development, um. Community Development Block Grant Program provides funds for. Um, mostly housing. Though that, that funding is, um, passes through Salt Lake County. And a few years ago, the county, um, changed the way it distributed those funds. Uh, and, you know, the long story short is that rather than receiving. Like a very modest allocation of, uh, CDVG funds. Um, which we had in the past and it was like, you know, a, a couple thousand dollars here and a couple thousand dollars there. Um. The way that we have access to these funds is now through this program, um, can you put that on the screen, by the way, Jen? Um. Through this, a, a program that essentially Salt Lake County administers. Um, so this, this ILA is the, is essentially allows the town of Alta to participate in this Salt Lake County program. Um. And potentially apply, uh, for funding to do a project in Alta. Um. So this is the arrangement that we've been in for the past, uh, several years. And we didn't see a strong reason to decline to participate because again. Um, you know, we would be participating, we would be competing against other entitlement entities, which are essentially. Um, large cities and urban counties, um, that, you know, just have, you know, huge demonstrated needs in the program areas, so. Um. Not, nothing will change, uh, if we adopt this ILA, and so that's, uh, you know, what we're bringing for you today.
Yeah, my summary of it is. We're too small to get any direct grants from HUD. But if we join this consortium of, uh, all these listed entities, we can indirectly get. Money from HUD because this consortium could get money and we can get a portion of that. Is that?
That's about right.
Okay. So, uh, any discussion on this? Seems like an easy thing to, uh. To adopt to me. Um, I rep, I, uh, move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash sixteen.
Second.
Seconded.
Okay. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay. All right, that takes us to new business, which is. You council's opportunity to. Well, weigh in. Who wants to go first? Uh, Mike Maury. Have to unmute, good.
Well, I apologize not being a member of the council, but I was hoping for just a quick opportunity to cover. Two things, one positive, the other not so much, which would you like first?
Tell us the bad news first.
Well, so Alta Central, uh, put out, um, a message on our social media and other platforms, um, about increased vigilance, um. With property crimes and, um, yeah, we're desperately in need of the community's help, keeping your eyes and ears open for suspicious activity. Um, we had another vehicle stolen from Alta Main Street recently, um. You know, you add that to the list of unprecedented things that are happening in our community this year, it's just unheard of. Uh, we've got some solid leads on the individuals we think that are responsible, but, you know, knowing and proving are a million miles, um, apart from one another. Um, but anything that the council and anybody, uh, monitoring, uh, this meeting can do to help us, uh, keep an extra eye on things. If it doesn't look right, please call Alta Central and be reminded then. Don't leave, uh, temptations about, um, on Main Street, you know, property in plain sight and vehicles, um, you know, these kind of people know how to find hide a keys. Um, they know how to defeat, um. Vehicle security systems, so, uh, please just extra vigilance. Um, on a positive note. Uh, most of the marshal's office, um, attended a graduation ceremony on May twenty-fourth for Haley Griffin. Um, one of our, uh, former full-time dispatchers. That, uh, has graduated from UFA's Fire Academy, so, uh. Haley will be, uh, staying on with us part-time, and if you happen to talk to her on one of her dispatch shifts, please congratulate her. Um, that was a lot of work she just went through, thank you.
Yeah, good. Good new business item. Um. Any other new business items?
Mayor, I'd ask to present actionable.
Mayor, I'd ask to present actionable ideas about affordable or opportunity housing in Alta. And we moved that to the July agenda because of the sheer amount of workload we had to get through today. I wonder if I actually might request that that be on the August agenda.
Uh, that's, that's okay with me. Um. Affordable housing goes from. Um. How about you folks that put the janitor together? Chris or Jen, is that, um, compatible?
Yeah, I just, um, you know, keep in mind that is an evening meeting. Which, uh, you know, I only mean to bring that up so you keep in mind of, you know, when you'd be needing to make the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Further new business items?
Great job today, Mr. Mayor, keeping us on track through this, uh, probably the lengthiest agenda we've dealt with since you would have been on the council.
Yeah, this is, uh, quite a, uh, how should I put it, uh, marathon session and, but. Most importantly. This was a monumental effort on the part of Jen and Chris to get all this data together. And that was, uh, yeah.
June is always a busy, so thank you.
Say that again, Elise?
Oh, I said the June meeting is always, always a good one, so thanks to.
Well, thanks for all of your input, um, we're, we're getting there. We're gonna hone it in soon.
Yeah, and I, uh, I'm, 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 um. Flawed by how much they pour themselves into this job and come out with such great stuff. So, there we are.
Thank you.
Okay, um. In that case, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn, uh, sixteen minutes early. Something I would have never predicted. All right, in that case, we're adjourned. Bye.
Great meeting. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody. My, my audio cut out for a second there. I didn't hear who first and seconded that.
Uh, it was not super, it wasn't clear. I think people were speaking over each other a little bit, um.
I, I made the motion. I'm not sure who seconded.
Well, I'll, I'll take, I don't know if I did or not, but do you need someone to claim that they did? I seconded it.
You're seconding it now and everyone is leaving, so, sorry.
Thank you, staff. You guys are always amazing.
Yes.
They were.
Those, those comparables are incredible, Jen. Incredible. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, John Byrne.